Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here. But now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
And this meeting is being held--
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. It's calling this meeting to order now. We just got the recording notification. So we're having this meeting virtually. And what was the announcements? I don't even recall what we had to announce, other than the fact that with the pandemic, we're acting virtually because of the health concern. And information for this meeting can be found on the web address at falmouthmass.gov/BOSS for Board of Selectmen. And if there's any other formalities I need to make, please tell me, Julian. Otherwise, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think you're good to go.
I think-- Sorry, I think you just have to call us to order with just saying who's present, only because it's virtual. I think it's supposed to be recorded.
Thank you, Megan. So I'll call us to order by roll call. Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye. You're here.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Doug Brown, aye. Very well, we're now in order. And Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance--
To the flag--
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God--
Indivisible--
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So proclamations. Does anybody want to read any of the proclamations, or should I just do it?
Sure, I'm happy to read it if there's your voice a little bit.
Happy to read the one for Brenda.
Great, thank you.
Okay, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Andre, did you want to read the Hispanic? Were you putting your hand up? I don't want to jump in front of everybody.
No, not necessarily. I just wanted to make one small comment. I don't know if it's appropriate to do it before or after we say it. The word indigenous should be capitalized. So when that's printed and we sign it, that should be capitalized.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so proclamation. Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the Hispanic Heritage Experience, also known as Spanish Heritage, is part of many lives and is valued as part of our nation's and our town's rich diversity. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder of how many strengths we draw as a nation from our immigrant roots and from our values as a nation of immigrants. And whereas September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries such as Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, and Mexico, and Chile, celebrate their independence days on September 16th, 18th, respectively. And whereas the Town of Falmouth seeks to foster an environment that is welcoming and supportive for all residents and visitors, regardless of national origin, ethnic background, or race. And whereas learning about the experience-- excuse me-- learning about and acknowledging systemic racism is necessary to develop policies that promote equitable experience and productive lives for Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Whereas equitable experiences and full inclusion is a matter of social justice. Consequently, creating equitable, inclusive environments is a shared responsibility of everyone. Now therefore, the Town of Falmouth Select Board proclaims September 15th, 2021, through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And commits to the pursuit of equitable and inclusive policies in a culture that appreciates the value of every resident. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed. Douglas C. Brown, Nancy R. Taylor, Samuel H. Patterson, Megan English Braga, Angelae Scott Price.
Second.
So I guess we'll take a roll call vote to adopt this. Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And I know, Mr. Suso, you mentioned it just before we officially opened the meeting, but Dr. Nancy Taylor is not with us this evening because she got two vaccinations today. And I guess there was some side effects, the shingles vaccine and regular flu shot. So I guess they don't make them like they used to, and she's not feeling well. So she can be with us tonight.
I can relate. I had a similar, larger-than-normal reaction to the flu shot. And I didn't try both of them at the same time.
Okay.
Better than the alternative, so.
Absolutely. You know, it was a half-day, and I was fine. So people should not be deterred from seeing it through, because it's well worth it.
Exactly. And I wouldn't go back on having my COVID vaccine either, because it certainly helped me through, even though I felt pretty crappy. So Mr. Patterson, did you want to do the Chamber of Commerce person?
It's a pleasure. I've known the Swain family for a long time. I've had both of their sons in my scout troop. I helped one of them get to Eagle Scout. Done a lot of camping with them. But I've also worked with Brenda at the Service Center. So this is really a pleasure for me to recognize her tremendous contribution, not only to Falmouth, but to the families on Joint Base Cape Cod who also use the Service Center's facilities. So with that, I'll read it out.
Thank you.
Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, 2021 Outstanding Citizen of the Year. Whereas the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce annually acknowledges and pays tribute to a citizen of the Town of Falmouth who has made a lasting positive impact on the community through participation in a broad scope of activities and whose commitment to the Town has been demonstrated by many years of service beyond his or her profession. And whereas Brenda Swain is an exceptional citizen of the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, and New England, well-known for all her professional accomplishments and widespread contributions to the betterment of society. And whereas Brenda Swain is a model citizen admired and esteemed for successfully balancing her devotion to family with years of integrity, tireless civic participation, and commitment to community progress. And whereas Brenda Swain quietly works to build a better town, to build the physical and moral fiber of our youngsters, to man the action boards and committees so vital to all of our interests, to preserve Falmouth open space, and to protect the values and rich character of Falmouth, Cape Cod. And whereas Brenda Swain's many accomplishments and contributions, singularly and collectively, are memorized in the minds of those she has touched and chronicled on pages of organizations across the Town. And as she continues to make a difference in the Town of Falmouth, we do hear and declare that this citizen is worthy of high praise and great recognition. And now therefore, we, Douglas C. Brown, Nancy R. Taylor, Samuel H. Patterson, Megan English Braga, and Angelae Scott Price, as Select Board of the Town of Falmouth, by the authority vested in us, do proclaim Brenda Swain, Falmouth 2021 Outstanding Citizen of the Year. And witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
Second.
Thank you. Very well. And all in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you so much to Brenda for her service to the Town. Where would we be without her?
Yeah, she's been a Town Meeting Member. I mean, I think we could go on for probably--
On so long aging.
Yes.
So much. And we're glad that she's here with us to celebrate it. And that we know we have to postpone it, but so glad that we're going to be able to do it.
Exactly.
And a great mother and wife as well.
Well, she certainly deserves it. And so next, we have recognition. I personally would like to make a recognition for Congressman Keating, Senator Ed Markey, and County Commissioner Mark Forrest, the three of-- who were the spearheads in working with the military-- excuse me, the Air Force. And, you know, we had the problem with our Fresh Pond well now for several months. It's been offline, and we're going to have to drill new wellheads and find whether or not we can even use that well anymore. And Mashpee had a similar problem from this PFAST and PFOSS. And they actually went so far in frustration, not thinking that the government was going to come out and help them. And they appropriated eight-and-a-half million dollars to fix their problems and drill new wells. And Senator Markey and Congressman Keating were successful in working with the Air Force to take on responsibility for something that hadn't really been a problem that they created specifically. And there was some other reason why they couldn't get funding through the Joint Base system to cover this, what's suspected to be a firefighting foam leak. Anyway, they have turned it around, and they've got the Air Force to pay for this and saved Mashpee eight-and-a-half million. And I don't know how much it's going to save us, but I'm sure it's going to save us something. So I just wanted to give a shout-out for their good work on that.
You're here.
And next, is there any other recognition or announcements from the board? Okay.
Aye, gee.
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair. Are we doing-- if we're doing announcements, I do have an announcement.
Yes, please.
I'd just like to announce and remind people that this Saturday, the Falmouth Police Department is celebrating their 100-year anniversary from noon to 2:00 p.m. And they have refreshments and activities for children. And we encourage all the community to come out and get to know some of the officers and have a good time celebrating with them.
Thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate it. I'll be there, too. Public comment. Oh, and Mr. Johnson stopped reminding me in the chat that I should have said earlier, if anyone wants to participate or speak during this meeting, they can log in and make a comment on the chat, or use the raised-hand function. And they'll be promoted to panelists to speak on any given item that they'd like to mention. And that includes public comment, if there is anybody waiting to do that now. So we'll give a couple seconds to see, take a look. I don't see anything more in the chat.
And I don't remember us receiving anything via email as a heads-up.
I don't think we did. So if there is anybody who wants to come back to that later, if they didn't feel like they got the proper opportunity to speak up now. So summary of actions, licenses. Approve application for an annual entertainment license at Coonamessett Farm, 277 Hatchville Road, Hatchville. Any comments or questions on this from the board?
I move approval.
Second.
I just had a little bit of a question and concern is that the hours are, like, every day of the week, from noon to 9:00 p.m. And it just says "on occasions," Monday through Sunday, noon to 9:00. So it's not a specific timeframe. It's just, it could be whenever. Is that okay with everybody?
I think usually when we give-- well, let me ask a question, Mr. Suso. Do they have to apply for a separate Sunday entertainment license?
I thought Sunday was a standalone.
I thought so, too.
Yeah.
So I guess I would be willing to approve it if it was Monday through Saturday. It looks like maybe somebody's here to comment on it.
Yes, I see Mr. Smallowitz coming on. If Mr. Smallowitz could be promoted to panelist, it probably is being that.
As far as the rest of the week, well, I've been to many events there. And, you know, I think it's just they'd like to have an open window in which they can schedule various, you know, celebrations.
Yep, I understand. I just wanted to make sure we're all where we're agreeing.
Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, sir.
Hi, we filed with the Selectmen's Office two forms. One that you guys approve, that has a check-off box, that we're also applying for the Sunday. And then Sunday is with the state. And that's sent in with a separate fee to the state through the Selectmen's Office.
Okay. So I see the form here. And I see that you did write in "on occasions, Monday through Sunday." But I believe we have a separate application that's required for the Sunday. Is that right, Mr. Suso?
That's my understanding as well. It was indicated that a separate application would be made.
I do see a license-- I see the request. So there's a license in our packet that talks about Sunday.
Okay, yeah, that's a separate one.
Okay. So I think maybe there's just a little bit of a clerical cleanup that we have to do. But it looks like there's a separate license for the Sunday that is there.
Now, this license, operating on every Sunday in the calendar year, regular hours, Sunday 1:00 p.m. till midnight? That doesn't seem right. Is that right, Mr. Smallowitz?
No, we're-- again, this is a state license. It's something new. In the past, we never had to apply for it.
Okay.
So our entertainment license with the Town is one that really defines the hours.
Okay.
Saying, you know, it's going to be when we have an event, and it will end before 9:00, is what we're doing. The state-- don't ask me why they-- you know, we don't even have a liquor license. And that's-- it's the state liquor authority that's controlling that Sunday license. It's all about liquor. Somehow, they want their $75 fee, so we have--
Right. Okay, well, Mr. Suso, I'm prepared to move this. And we have a motion in a second already. Are we going to be okay that we approve the Monday through Sunday, given that we have this other paper filled out?
I think you'll be okay. We'll double-check that and can clarify it intermedia next week, if necessary.
All right, then.
That was certainly-- that was the intent of my motion, for sure.
Right.
I would second-- I would second that motion, as long as we clarify it.
Okay, very good. We have a motion in a second. And all in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Mr. Brown, aye. Thank you, Mr. Smallowitz, for being here.
Thank you very much for listening.
Okay.
Have a good meeting.
You, too, thanks. And next, we have an application to a change of manager for all alcoholic beverages common victualer license. New Cape Cod Country Club Incorporated, doing business as Cape Cod Country Club, 48 Theater Drive, Hatchville.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I think you had somebody who wanted to make a comment, I believe, in the chat.
All right, thank you.
Kristensen?
Could we please promote Mr. Kristensen to the position of panelist, if he wants to speak?
I see his tile. Maybe he just needs to--
Yeah, he's coming up.
Let us see him.
He's not muted. So, Mr. Kristensen, are you there? Would you want to start addressing this?
I don't see the little icon that's supposed to show a microphone or a video. So I'm wondering if that person is having connection issues.
Okay.
They've been on the panelist list for a few minutes.
Okay.
Can you help us, Justin?
Or maybe if he wants to type in his comment, maybe--
Connecting to audio. He must need a new fiber optic network connection. I think Ms. Scott Price may be correct, and he just doesn't have the high-speed internet connection he needs to get on here.
Is it possible for him to call in on the phone?
It is.
Maybe--
I do not have the start video or audio feature for it, Mr.-- Oh, for the phone, for phoning in?
No, he's saying he doesn't-- it's not popping up for him when he tries to connect. Is it-- so if he can call in, or he could type his comment in the chat, if he's able to do that.
He's left the video conference, I think. I think he was not able to connect.
He's part of the new-- the Cape Cod Country Club. It's-- his name is on the application for our next item. So I don't know if he was trying to--
And I'm looking on the meeting notice for the phone number to call in here. And would I be correct to say that the phone number that Mr. Kristensen would want to use is 301-715-8592?
Do you have that information, Peter, or Justin?
Can somebody type that into the chat?
That's a good idea.
Justin, can you confirm that that will-- that that phone number will work if called in, or is that function disabled?
Might I make a suggestion? Mr. Chair, if we just hold this particular-- because I think he's coming in to deal with this amendment change of manager. Perhaps we could just hold that and move on to another item while he figures out how to connect.
That's a good idea.
His mic is unmuted.
Okay, Mr. Kristensen, can you speak to us? And we can see if we can hear you? All right, well, we're going to come back to you. And if you want to try calling in on the phone number 301-715-8592. And if that doesn't work, you can call my cellphone at 508-560-4149. And then we'll give you the real number to call in officially if that one's not working. Okay, thank you. And we're going to move on. We'll come back to this in the next time when he's ready. And the next is application-- approve application for nine special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license, Cape Cod Theater Guild, Highfield Theater, 58 Highfield Drive, October 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 29th, 30th, 31st, November 5th, 6th, and 7th. Friday and Saturday hours from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. And Sunday hours from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Move approval.
Do this almost every year.
I would second.
And all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. I'm going to answer this and see who it is. Hello, Doug Brown? Hi, Edward. I'm going to put you on speakerphone. Hang on a second. There you go. So I have Mr. Kristensen here now for Cape Cod Country Club. And we're going to go back to that. Did you want to just share something with us about the license?
Yeah, I've been here for six years as an assistant general manager. And we've done a pretty good job since I've, you know, limited the drinking intake for our customers. And we've pretty much been incident-free. So I want to keep on top of that with a tips program. Limit our problem drinking, but so far, it's-- you know, I've definitely had no issues here for many years. I just want to continue to keep the same thing going on like that.
Okay. And so I see that the-- you will be the new manager. You've been there working, but now you're going to be the manager. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, I've been-- yeah, we-- I'm the assistant golf pro for many of them. Also, assistant GM. Ended up getting promoted to the general manager and I'm the director of golf as well, so.
Okay, good. Congratulations, then.
Oh, thank you.
And can everyone hear Mr. Kristensen all right?
Yeah, quite clearly, actually.
Okay, good. Well, are there any questions for Mr. Kristensen while he's here?
Yeah, while he's here. Just remember, Mr. Kristensen, you are responsible for all of the alcoholic beverage-related practices at the Cape Cod Country Club. So you will be personally responsible.
Can you hear him okay, Mr. Kristensen?
Yeah, I can hear him.
Good, okay. All right, so if you would just acknowledge that Mr. Patterson's statement-- we do say that to every person taking over a liquor license. That's Doug Jones' tradition.
Yes.
Yeah, and hopefully I can keep it up.
Okay, very good.
Great.
I would move approval.
Okay, I have a move to-- motion to approve. Is there a second?
Patterson, second.
Mr. Patterson, second. All those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you, Mr. Kristensen, for being here to talk to us. Appreciate it.
Thanks, gentlemen and ladies. Appreciate that we could finally get connected.
All right, good luck with your new role.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Little unorthodox, but it seemed to work. And next, we have approve application for a change of officers of an all-alcoholic beverages common victualer license, 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC, doing business as 99 Restaurant &amp; Pub, 30 Davis Streets, Falmouth. This is a general change to the whole company. So we're just one small part of the change. Are there any questions or concerns from the board?
I have none. I've patronized them enough times to feel comfortable and that they will manage their institution correctly. They certainly do a lot of business. So I would move approval of this application.
Is there a second?
I'd second.
Okay. And any other further discussion? Any comments from the board or public? We have someone in the chat who-- Pizzano, to everyone, good evening. I am here on behalf of the 99 to answer any questions you may have. So do we have any questions for this person? I don't have any.
No.
Okay, so thank you for being here. We don't have any questions. And so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. So thank you. We're all set. And good luck with the new management. Next, we have administrative orders. Approve ever-source petition to install approximately 60 feet of 4-inch conduit in one-hand hole southeasterly from the new handhole at base of pole number 215/5 on Fairview Ave. in Falmouth. This work is to be done to provide electric service to 66 Allen Ave. Is there a motion to approve, or any questions?
No.
Yes, Ms. Scott Price?
I was just wondering. I know they held a public forum. Were there any concerns from the public or butters about this at all?
I didn't see any in the packet, Mr. Suso. Any knowledge of any concerns?
I understand that there were no concerns raised. My understanding that there were no concerns raised.
Okay, thank you, then I move for approval.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye.
I might just note, as background, we did get a recommendation from Nicholas Croft from our engineering technician, or engineer at the DPW Engineering Division. So they reviewed it, didn't see any conflicts.
Okay, very good. And next we have, uh, authorize a letter to the Steamship Authority regarding long-term parking and excise tax. And this was, uh, generated by the Transportation Committee, they took note of the fact that a lot of cars park in the Steamship Authority parking lots for extended period of time. Did some research on the, uh, state, state statute that controls it, sent us a copy of it, and just reminded us that maybe we should consider sending a letter, and Mr. Suso has got one prepared for us. So any other questions or comments about it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a note in your packet is some language that I would be including in the letter, subject to the board's, uh, concurrence with proceeding.
Yeah, I saw that, I thought it was well done. Any other comments from the board regarding the letter, or any other aspect of this request?
No, I would just move to authorize it.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
All right, uh, motion and second, Mr. Patterson, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And thanks to the Transportation Committee for bringing that to our attention. And next uh, vote to accept donation in the amount of seven hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents from the Old Stone Dock Association to the Beach Department donation account to fund the sixteen window boxes at the L T Mitchell Bathhouse at fifty-six Surf Drive. And the Old Stone Dock Association donates this every year, and it's very nice to keep that up the way they do.
I move, we accept this donation and thank them.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And so next we have vote to expend those funds from the Beach Department donation account in the amount of seven hundred and twelve eighty to pay the Source Flower Garden Nursery invoice for flowers and planting services.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
Brown, aye. So much thanks again to the Old Stone Dock Association and for Source Landscape for doing the work. Next, we have, uh, vote authorized to extend temporary outdoor restaurant seating approvals from November first twenty-twenty-one to April first, twenty-twenty-two. And I will mention that I attended, uh, a summit last week up in Plymouth, Susan Moran and, uh, Taki Chan, a representative from Quincy, had a a little meeting to discuss and listen to restaurant owners and, uh, their take on how outdoor seating has worked and helped them, and we had a couple other restaurants attend by Zoom, and, uh, they were explaining all the, uh, the benefits of it that helped them through COVID, and the fact that they could still use a little bit more time. And I've, actually, I'm certainly hoping that the, uh, governor will extend this through next summer, because so many restaurants have invested so much time and money in these outdoor seating arrangements, and I don't know how much they've had a chance to recover from all the downtime that they had, but I think maybe a little more time would be good, so I'm, I'm hoping that they'll extend it even further, but that's just my feeling.
Well, I agree. And I think for, for us as customers going to these restaurants, it's much more comfortable as long as the weather is, is suitable to actually sit outdoors, uh, and enjoy that, that benefit.
Yeah, and one of the people that, uh, well, two people, the husband and wife that own the Cape Cod Winery were invited to speak, and they were mentioning how, uh, right through the winter, these hardy Cape Codders were coming out and sitting around the the little fireplaces that they have, and enjoying a glass of wine, even on blustery nights. So it just shows how resilient we can be when we want to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The application that's in here, the extension, um, are these, did these come from the state, and can we add questions to them, or we have to use them as they are?
Uh, Mr. Suso, can you address that?
My understanding is that they're form applications from the state, I will double-check that though, and, uh, get back to you if there is some variability allowed. I think they are form, let, form, uh, notes that are under the governor's orders.
Okay, the reason I ask is because, while I also agree that outdoor seating is fantastic, I know we've gotten many complaints about a, I'm thinking of a particular place that I won't, um,
Right.
I won't put out right now, um, and so I would like the opportunity to at least consider uh, complaints that have been against certain places, or if we can, um, have contingencies such as outdoor seating, but no music, or, you know, if there's different options for what we can do in places that we know people maybe live close by, or that we've heard a lot of complaints about.
And Miss English Braga?
Yes, uh, just to Angelé's point, um, this just allows for those permits, it doesn't make it automatic. Um, so I know it still allows the select board, um, and the other, you know, town agencies to, to weigh in on this, and that was how it was working when these originally happened, you know, we had to review them, because some of the proposals from some of the restaurants obviously weren't suitable, um, so we still, even with this, would have the ability, um, to weigh in and, and take a look at, um, some of the places where we have received a lot of feedback, so good point.
And this just allows the restaurants to come back and check in with Mr. Suso, and just make sure everything's still in place, like the additional insurance for the outdoor seating area and so forth. And that's an opportunity for Mr. Suso to review the file and consider whether or not the way it's been done has been working, or if there might be some adjustments to be made, so. Can we assume, Mr. Suso, that that would be the process that would be following?
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll confirm all that and make certain that every opportunity is taken to deal with concerns that arise.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, we have, um, do we have a motion? Would, is there a motion to approve this?
We do, I don't think we've always though.
Okay, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
I'll second, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Scott Price, uh, I'll, I'll second and aye.
Okay, very good.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. So that is, uh, available now to restaurants, and I would take this opportunity to mention, I hope some restaurant owners are listening in, or maybe they'll catch up with this later, but it's not a guarantee that the governor is going to extend these orders beyond uh, May first, and if you want to continue the outdoor seating, it would be my suggestion that you should check in with whatever regulatory authority may be in play, whether it's planning board, or zoning board, or this select board office to make that seating permanent, if that's your intention, and I, I don't know how we can, uh, convey that, the importance of that, because when May first comes and everyone has to take down all these outdoor things that are not approved, if the governor does not choose to, to move it forward, it's gonna be pretty unsettling, and it's a pretty bad time of year to be doing it, so. I'm hoping that the governor will do something, but I don't have any reason to believe that he will, nobody's told me. Have you heard anything, Mr. Suso, about the possibility of an extension? Has there been any official word from the governor's office?
I have not received anything on that, no. We're encouraging, uh, restaurants that may want to consider that for the long term to, uh, take the time now to go to either the planning board, or the zoning board of appeals, either one that would have jurisdiction in their particular case, so that they can, uh, fully recover their investments if they choose to.
Can you, uh, maybe put that in a letter to all these folks and send them a reminder?
Automatically, yes.
Okay, all right, um, I don't know what else we can do then, if they're aware of it, and they need to take action, yes.
Maybe just a, an, an extra reach out, Mr. Suso, to, um, Michael Casparian at the chamber, to just make sure they're doing on their end, which I'm sure they are, just passing that message, uh, on.
Will do.
That would be great. Okay, next we have, um, proceeding, recommendation to zoning board of appeals on request for flow-neutral bylaw variance for development at seven-sixty Main Street and twenty-fourth Grant now. This is the new, uh, housing development. Right?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, as you know, the, uh, as noted in the board packet, there's a draft letter for the board's consideration, and, uh, Peter, you may have, you may have some summary comments on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to give an overview, so, a- as the board is probably aware, uh, if, uh, for any project that is not a forty-B, the zoning board holds a flow-neutral bylaw hearing for, uh, developments that propose an increase of flow that are on uh, over a certain threshold, uh, that are on this, the sewer system, uh, however, in the case of a forty-B application, that determination of the variance is made by the zoning board of appeals. So, uh, what typically happens in, in this context with the forty-B is that the permitting, uh, board, in this case, the select board, makes a referral to the zoning board of appeals on the subject. Uh, and in this case, for this flow-neutral variance, we did receive uh, memos from Scott McGann, the health agent, and Amy Lowell, the wastewater superintendent, that, uh, this proposal does meet the requirements for a variance under the flow-neutral bylaw. Um, and under the board's policy, you've identified priorities for the type of projects for which uh, variances will be prioritized, one of those being affordable housing, uh, which, of course, this is a proposal for just that, for forty-eight units of affordable rental housing for individuals aged sixty-two and older. So the draft memo before you, uh, recommends, provides a positive referral on the variance to the zoning board of appeals. Um, I also took the opportunity, given the board's prior expressed support for this project, uh, to encourage the zoning board to approve the comprehensive permit without a reduction to the number of rental units. Happy to answer any questions.
I saw the letter, I thought it was, uh, well done. Is there any other comments from the board on the letter? Should there any be, I think, any more points being made? Miss English Braga?
Uh, I am just going to disclose, as I have before, that at one point in time, um, I handled a summary process matter for Falmouth Housing Corporation, nothing to do with this project, or actually any of their, um, projects of this nature, it's a standalone, single-family home, um, that resulted um, in, you know, representation as I was covering for another attorney, so I may, um, just out of an abundance of caution, and since there are already three members of the board, I may recuse myself from this vote.
Okay.
I, I don't think that's necessary, Megan, personally, uh, under these circumstances, but, uh, anyway, I'd really appreciate the back, backup information that's provided in this recommendation, and so thank you, uh, Peter. Um, and I certainly recommend that we forward this to the zoning board of appeal, and particularly emphasize that we don't want them to reduce the number of property, uh, number of units, which is forty-eight in this particular case, since it's it's an ideal location in so many ways, in terms of the services that are available to elderly people that will reside there, uh, and we're taking care of the environmental impact issues by connecting it to the sewer.
And I did speak with, uh, zoning administrator, Norines Dokman, today, uh, regarding, uh, Miss Scott Price's concern about the timeliness of this project, and hopefully the ZDA will move as expeditionally, as expeditiously as possible to uh, move this through the process, so that they don't miss their window of opportunity, and she assured me that that's you know, everyone is on board with doing as fast as possible, and they're just gonna, you know, they can't guarantee that it'll get through, but everyone is doing the best they can to accommodate the project. And so we have a motion by Mr. Patterson, is that right?
Yes.
And a second, okay, and all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
I will abstain.
Okay, and I will vote yes. So the motion passes. And our next assignment is, Mr. Alan Robinson is here to discuss this. I had an email from, uh, Alan saying that the letter, the, uh, Solid Waste Advisory Committee had, um, sent us a letter, authorization for proposed letter from the Solid Waste Advisory Committee to Cape Cod Commission on proposed born landfill expansion. And I know, Alan, that you sent a subsequent letter saying that the vote had already been taken, and so we don't need the letter. But I would suggest, you've taken the time to write the letter, why not send it along and they can add it to the file? I don't think it hurts anything, if you'd like to.
We, speaking for the, our committee, we'd be happy to, yes.
Okay, why not? I don't think it's gonna hurt, just so they'll have it on file. And so, uh, has everyone had a chance to look at the letter that was sent?
But I do, do have a, a question of Alan, I mean,
Okay.
These resources aren't inexhaustible, so sometime in the future, some alternative will have to be identified for processing our solid waste, or for, or at least removing it anyway. Has any, any thought been given to the long-range solution to this problem? I mean, I
Well, I guess from the, from our, from the Barnstable County perspective, the county had a study done, uh, just, I just, just this past year, this year, uh, looking at long-term alternatives for, uh, off, off, off-Cape disposal, and those alternatives are landfills in places like North Carolina and Ohio that can be accessed via, via rail. Uh, certainly, waste reduction is an important element, uh, and food waste being the, sort of the biggest piece of our solid waste, uh, pie that we could reduce. And, um, so that's something certainly from the Falmouth Solid Waste Advisory Committee will be looking at, together with the Department of Public Works, uh, perhaps, you know, we can't jump into something town-wide, uh, as soon as the, this coming contract, but we are working to do things on, on a very local basis to increase food waste separation, and, uh, it's a long-term problem, it's a real challenge, not just in the Commonwealth, not, uh, but nationwide, and, uh, it will take some innovation, but, uh, maintaining a landfill on the Cape, I think, is of great value, even if it only lasts until twenty forty or so.
We don't even, oh, sorry, quit.
That's, you know, it's been maybe six or seven years ago, but I actually took a tour of the born waste facility. Um, and we were presented with the option of actually separating out food waste and processing it, and they actually had a subcontractor that does this, I know there's, uh, it's done in Connecticut, uh, so no mention of that kind of processing to help extend the life of that landfill?
The, they did a pilot program of, uh, with, uh, taking food waste and processing it on-site, and it just wasn't successful. Um, I don't have, I can't, can't really relate the details of, of why, but at least with regard to that landfill, they are not pursuing that at this time. Uh, I know others within, I know the county commission has been looking at alternatives, and I believe that's one of the alternatives they're looking at, doing that on a, a region-wide, either a county-wide basis, or a southeast Massachusetts-wide basis. Uh, and it's something we should, you know, we Falmouth should be looking at, um, uh, as we.
We'll have to do, we'll have to do our own program, but for today, we can't go too far into all that, it's really not on the agenda. But, uh, we're gonna take a vote now on this letter, even though it's after the fact, so, um, is there a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Uh, is there a second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English, aye.
And Brown, aye. So thank you, Alan, and, uh, we'll be talking again in the near future about all these solid waste issues, I'm sure.
Thanks, I got a quick question, do we send, do we provide the letter to the, to the manager's office, and they send it for us, or do we send it ourselves?
Uh, well, we have the copy of it, unless you have an officially signed one that you'd like to drop off.
Okay, but the Solid Waste Committee recommends to the select board, so it's probably our action.
Yes.
Right.
So we really should be put in a different format.
Well, ju- just to clarify, the, uh, board's already sent a letter doing that, this is a second letter from our committee alone, so if you'd like us to send it from Town Hall, we'd be happy to do that, uh, once we have the signed copy.
Or, or if you want to send it yourself and say that we've signed it, it, it should come to the town manager's office, really.
I can get to Mr. Suso, uh, tomorrow.
That'd be great. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have, uh, public hearings at seven thirty.
I can read the notice, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
Okay, storm water, this is notice of public hearing, storm water management rules and regulations. The Falmouth Select Board, under the authority of the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, Section C three dash seven, subsection H of the Code of the Town of Falmouth, will hold a public hearing to establish and adopt storm water management rules and regulations for the Town of Falmouth. The hearing will
The hearing will be held on Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one, at seven thirty PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall, fifty-nine Town Hall Square. The draft proposed regulations related to the NPDES permit and EPA and DEP revised June, date June twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, can be accessed for viewing, and then it gives the website. This was published on Friday, July sixteenth, in the Falmouth Enterprise. This is a continuation of that hearing.
Okay, so I see Mr. McLaughlin is here. Did you want to, or Mr. Suso, did you want to introduce?
I can give a few introductory comments. Appreciate having our town engineer, Jim McLaughlin, with us. As the board will recall, we've been reviewing with Town Council Frank Duffy and staff members the most reasonable process for moving forward, particularly in the area of any appeals to public works implementation and enforcement on the stormwater regulations. Frank Duffy has now determined that it's most appropriate legally to have any appeals come to the Select Board directly, rather than the Conservation Commission, following an internal review process by a staff member which we would designate. This process is included in the final form of the regulations, which were included in your board packet. And I do recommend that the board vote to adopt, and welcome having Jim with us to answer any questions that members of the board may have. And I should note that Town Council's with us as well.
Very good. Thank you. Initial questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, on page sixteen, there is a list of six fees to be paid with a fee structure. It seems like we should not put that here, but just simply cite our fee policy, because that gets voted on on an annual basis and could very well change. So rather than put it into this document, which should stay pretty much the same, shouldn't we give ourselves the option to change these fees if it's appropriate and do it through our normal fee review process?
We can certainly do that. You don't normally set fees until a little bit later in the year. I'd be guided by Frank Duffy's insight on this, whether we include it initially, just on and indicate that it'll be amended each year by the board as fees would change, or there's a better practice to follow. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that as well, Jim?
Well, my thought would be, whatever is the easiest for the board to process is a way to go. And, you know, we don't see it as a money-making venture in terms of the fees, more just to cover the incidental costs of the review.
Yes, Megan?
But do we, and maybe someone could just remind me, when we vote our fees, those fees are encapsulated in other policies, though, correct? And then we, so in other words, when we vote fees for certain things, are those fees also within other policies and we're just voting them as we do throughout the year?
Some of them, by my memory, are exactly that way. Not all, but of course some.
I would agree, whatever, Frank. I don't think it's that. I understand what Sam is saying, but the fees are pretty limited, so if, oh, here's Frank, so maybe he can give us a thought on it.
I think perhaps if you follow up on Sam's comment, leave it in, and we can add language that they're subject to review on an annual basis by the board, by the select board acting in accordance with the bylaw on fees.
That works for me.
Great.
Okay, I got a couple of concerns. I still have the same two concerns that I had the last time, and my question the last time was, what is ordinary roadway maintenance that is going to be exempt from this? Does that include repaving?
Yes, I would say that normal paving would be exempt from the bylaw, where it's reestablishing an existing footprint that's already there.
But I have a concern with that, because we have a lot of roadways that really are in need of drainage improvements. For instance, we did Thomas Landers Road over there, and the, you know, that's a heavily traveled industrial road, and I know you, the DPW crew went back out and added some drainage afterwards, after concerns were raised, but I think that's the perfect opportunity to be improving that drainage. And it just seems a shame to exempt ourselves from a chance to take a look at that.
I, I agree with that, and I think, you know, subsequent to the Thomas Landers project, that's what we've been doing with conservation on Catherine Lee Bates, which is, you know, just being paved now. Garnet Ave that we did last year, Assumet, there's a section of Assumet that we had stopped to accommodate concerns like conservation had raised. So any place that we're in a resource area or close to resource area, we are making those accommodations above and beyond what's required by this regulation.
Right, but why do we want to exempt ourselves from, from this regulation with the roadway maintenance? I just feel like I, it's a sticking point for me. I feel like we should be leading by example and doing all we can. If we're going to enforce this on private developers, I think we should enforce it on ourselves. Any other comments on that?
If I may, I mean, you're really not saying that you, you can't do it. You're really just saying that you don't have to do it. So certainly the town could take it upon themselves, like Jim has done, and Jim and your department has taken it upon yourselves really to do some drainage improvements on these redevelopment projects. So, but, you know, say there's absolutely no, no place to put stormwater. At least you are still allowed to repave that road and fix that road without having to then, you know, find some place to put stormwater that doesn't exist.
Well, I think the language is in here to cover that at the end, where it says, you know, you're gonna do it if you can, and the exceptions are if it's just not feasible, it can't be done. That's already written in at the end. So we don't have to exempt ourselves for that. Any other feelings from the other board members on this?
I think that, that should be our challenge. I agree with you, Doug.
Okay, well, I'd like to see that stay in there if other board members agree. Another concern I have is the annual reporting. And I just feel like that's cumbersome. Why do we need to go back and annually report on a stormwater management project that's complete and done and all planted, and how does that? I don't, I don't see the benefit, and it's just gonna be something that gets forgotten. You're gonna be constantly having to remind people. They're gonna be in violation if they don't report it. They're gonna have a backlog of reporting to do. It just seems like it's problematic, and is that something that's legally required?
Which real quick right here.
It's also at the end.
Yeah, um, so under the permit, basically, the, the town is basically required to report to EPA as part of this project that, you know, what has been done annually as far as from a maintenance standpoint on these types of projects? So were these projects reviewed and inspected and by who? And what types of recommendations and implementation requirements were, need to be made? So really, the intent of this is just to have someone qualified go out and look at these stormwater BMPs and say, does it need to be inspected? Or does it need to be maintained? Does it need to be mowed down, et cetera, et cetera? Some of my communities have just, every year, they, there are subdivisions or whoever it is that have these BMPs in place, need to submit a report to the town that says these were looked at on X state, and there were no, no issues encountered, nothing needs to be done, or that, you know, this is what does need to be done, so. So the town does need to establish these long-term operation and maintenance requirements for these different types of BMPs.
And Megan, did you have a comment?
I was just going back to your last point, Doug. I was just wondering, Frank, did you have anything? I'm just curious as to whether or not if we don't include the language as it is now, are we in any way setting ourselves up where we can't do a project because of it? I just want to make sure, and I know, Doug, you're pointing out that there's some sort of waiver language. I just want to make sure that we, and if, and if Frank needs to get back to us, he can. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, tie our hands in a way that makes doing some of these much-needed projects impossible.
I'm not really able to answer that question. I didn't participate in the drafting of these regulations. That was something that the former associate town council, Irene Mullen, did while she was here. I just got involved at the last month or so on the appeal process. But I know that for some time, Jim McLaughlin and Peter McConerty have been trying to get the town to adopt these regulations to comply with state and federal law. So there may be something in the background that I simply don't know right now, and I can't answer the question.
Mr. Chairman, could I just interject?
Please.
Peter McConerty has texted me, and just with, I think Peter's with us, he's just not, hasn't been elevated. Peter's reminded me that repaving roadways, by his understanding, are considered maintenance and are therefore exempt from the federal stormwater regulations. He does emphasize that Public Works includes drainage on all of our projects, and that's their goal. But maintenance technically is exempt. Here's Peter now, so.
That's, that's what I was just asking. I just don't want something we draft to be, you know, in opposition to or contradictory to the, you know, other standards that we're trying to comply with.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, excuse me, this is something that we've been working with for many, many years. And as town engineer Jim McLaughlin has said, the roadways that we do, we do, we have a list of roadways that we work on. We know the roadways that are in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. And when we go into those areas, we want to go in, we want to improve the pavement, and we want to improve the drainage in there, because we know it's a lot of work to get in there. It's a lot of work to get the permitting done. We know we're not going to be going back there for a while. So our goal is to go in and abide by the stormwater regulations as much as we can practical for the roadway. So we will go in there, and we'll do as much work as we can. We try to stay out of the resource areas. We try to capture the water before we get to the low points. And we have several areas that we're working with in town right now on some of the projects. But it is our goal for all the projects that we do. We, we try to go in and improve all the drainage.
Right. But, so my question was earlier, is why do we need to exempt ourselves on these roadway maintenance projects? I would think it would be a good way to ensure that we're reminded to, to do the best we can on each project.
So the way, the way I would look at it is the regulations say that repaving, that's a maintenance, right? So we do a lot of repaving. Every year, we're doing two to three million dollars worth of work every year when they repave it. So for us to get the work done, we, we work very closely with the Conservation Commission to do the asphalt. They will not allow us to repave a roadway until they review it. If we're doing a roadway, take for instance, Martin Road, we're coming down towards Martin Road to a low point. If, if we're doing one of those areas, we work with conservation agency, we work with Mark Kaspasik. They won't let us do it without us reviewing it and see what we're going to do, to do for drainage in those areas. And most times it's not administrative. Most times it's an RDA or a full submittal to do those roadways.
But I'm, I'm just wondering, why do we need to exempt ourselves? I know you've told me that you guys work together, and I understand that. But technically, legally, now, we're, we're asking ourselves to consider exempting the roadway maintenance, and I'm just wondering why we really need to do that. I, I just feel like we should lead by example and say, if we're gonna adopt these regulations, we should all live by them. And I see at the end of it, it says in some cases where improvements are not possible, you know, they're gonna be not required. There's some language at the end that allows for that very case, where sometimes you just don't have any options, right?
I understand. I'm just saying, as per the regulations, it's asphalt is maintenance. When we repave our roadways, it's maintenance. If we widen the roadway, if we do improvements to the roadway, if we add a sidewalk, if we add impervious area, you're automatically required. But if you're just going in and you're paving over a roadway for maintenance, it's, they consider it exempt. So if we want to be more restrictive to the town, we can, we follow it anyways. It's just, that's the way we've been doing it over the past, over the past years. And it's been working well with the Conservation Commission, but.
Well, I'm just trying to get at, you know, what specific reason there would be that we would want to give ourselves this exemption. I just, you know, as a member of the Water Stewards, I'm always, you know, I'm always harping on this, and I was very encouraged when Matt Patrick brought this up and asked us to take a look at the Martin Road situation, and I know we're improving it. But unless it really is burdensome to the repaving process, I'd really like to see us not have this exemption language. Ms. Scott Price?
I'm wondering if part of the exemption is because when you're repaving a road, the idea is that you're not making any changes to an existing road, so perhaps whatever drainage or whatever is already functioning would continue to function as it already is, and you would just be cleaning it up, so to say?
I think that's, that is the thinking, right, Ms. McConerty?
Yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty much correct, yeah. So most of the drain, some of the drain, Martin Road, they're leak-offs on the side of the road. There is no drainage, it's leak-offs. So we would be addressing that. They would not allow us to pave over that. We would be addressing that with basins.
And those would be those pollution control structures, is that right?
Either or. It could be pollution control structures. It could be deep, deep sumps out of their jurisdiction up the road.
I see. Are there some cases where the ordinary storm drains are still in place and they're still okay? Do those sometimes work in those areas?
Yeah, we have, we have many storm drains that are, that are still in place. They're not pipe systems, they're just standalone drainage structures in the roadway. And we have many of them that, that work. The trick of it is following the NEPTES regulations and cleaning the basins out. So we've been, highway departments, we've been working with the engineering department, working very hard to get all those drainage basins cleaned out. And we're at a point now that we don't have, the basins filled up to the top. We, we're on a program now that we're following to keep the basins cleaned out, so they're not filled up, and the water's running over the top of them. I can't capture inside of it. So if the basins are good and they're working, we keep them. If they're not, we replace them.
I see. That's when those pollution control structures come in?
Correct.
Okay. Let me just ask you this. If we were to take out the language with the exemption, what kind of problems are we creating for you? Is anything gonna really change as far as day-to-day business of repaving?
Jim?
I would say no, if, as long as we have the, the option, as you mentioned, as the chairman at the end, where there is no alternative, then I think that's fine.
Okay, well, I'd like to consider that if we could. And then we talked about the annual reporting, and I know that Mr. Christopher explained that that's a state requirement. So is that a requirement that the town reports to the state? And all the private contractors report to the town, and then we have to compile this database every year? Is that right, what I'm understanding?
We don't really know, because we don't have the, the latest annual report that's gonna be due next year. But the town is required, even right now, to, to report things like the number of ASBILs that were, that were received, the number of site inspections that were performed, the number of plan reviews that were performed, so. So it is, it is possible that, that, that number would need to get reported directly to EPA as part of the annual reporting requirements. We, we just don't know exactly a hundred percent right now, because the, the annual reporting templates that are provided by EPA don't, don't a hundred percent match the permit. They, they match most of it, but not everything.
Okay, so we don't know exactly what we're getting into, but we know we can't get out of it, basically, right?
Can I add something?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I went to, I don't know what you'd call it, a meeting, like five or six years ago. Peter was there on this NPDES system. And I know there was a lot of emphasis on actually kind of tracking the maintenance that we do for catch basins when they're cleaned out. And I know we bought a piece of equipment with a GPS, so that it actually kind of automates that process. Have we, am I wrong in assuming that we've actually incorporated this into how we maintain our records, and it becomes part of our reporting system? Peter? Or Jim? I, I know that we have a GPS system. We have all our basins logged into the, into the GIS system. And we keep a log of the, the bases that we do clean out, and I think Jim's making it even with the new, this is the new stormwater regulation with the new NEPTES, so I think Jim's even more restrictive on cleaning the basins out, so. Yeah, we are keeping track at it, and we're actually looking at getting another piece of equipment for basin cleaning. yeah, we are keeping track at it and we're actually looking at getting another piece of equipment for basin cleaning. That'll be coming up this town meeting. So we're looking at getting another truck for a clamshell basin cleaner.
I was wondering about that. Do you need a special type of cleaning tool to do those pollution control structures and, you know, the perimeter where the oil and stuff gathers? How does that work? Is that a regular cleaning, basin cleaning truck?
The storm scepter ones, what we use is we have a vector truck. We'll bring the vector truck out there and be able to suck with a swirl in the middle. We'll be able to get a lot of that.
I see.
Straight, the straight basins that we have, the leachant basins, we use the clamshell. And we rot it. We get it, we can get in there and rot it and spray it out and get, sometimes you get tree roots and muck and dirt, stones and that clog up the holes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, sorry, just, just to build on that real quick. I mean, the, the town does track all of that, you know, regularly as part of the annual reporting requirements that go to EPA. Actually, the, the town is submitting an annual report to EPA tomorrow. And just, just so the board is aware, the town cleaned roughly 475 catch basins within the last fiscal year and pulled out about a couple, couple thousand cubic yards. So there's definitely, definitely some material that gets pulled out of these things.
Yeah, but we probably have a few thousand of them around the town, right?
I think we're about thirty-six hundred basins in town.
Right.
A lot of basins.
Get another machine.
So I have a question, Doug.
Yes, Sam.
Talked about adding another piece of equipment to our inventory. But do we have adequate staffing to keep up with these requirements? And that's, so that's my question.
Well, this piece of equipment that we're looking at is going to be a replacement for the existing clamshell truck that we have. So it's a new truck. It's a little bit smaller. It's going to be more convenient to get into the areas we need to get into work when. So it'll be, it's a, it's a replacement truck.
But what about the staff to get all of this done?
Well, it's challenging because it's, I mean, you got stormwater, I mean, throughout the year, you got the stormwater, the beaches need continuous help in the summertime from highway. So we're always kind of bouncing around and juggling things in the air. But it's just something that we do continuously. At some point in the future, we may be looking at adding additional staff. It wouldn't just be for the stormwater, but it'd be for all the areas, all the different disciplines that we do combined.
It's a tough thing to balance because when the economy is hot, you're sure to help. And then you put on extra help and the economy tanks and all of a sudden you don't need as much help. Balancing, yes, Megan?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't mean to harp on it, but I just want to make sure that you're talking about that number 10 on the last page as being the waiver language, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure again that there's enough, you know, here it's giving these four reasons why we can waive it. If we're going to take away regular road maintenance and we're going to make this apply to maintenance in the regular course, I want to make sure that we have a provision here that's appropriate for that situation where that needs to be waived. So in other words, here's what I'm thinking. You know, they're trying to to do regular road maintenance and whatever. I'm just going to pick a number. It's a hundred thousand dollars to pave the section that they're planning on paving. And they've obviously worked that into their budget, you know, throughout the year. And then they get there and to redo the stormwater drains and all of that, you know, to rework all of it. Number one, it's going to delay it significantly. And maybe number two, I don't know, maybe it doubles the price. I just want to make sure, you know, we don't delay some of the maintenance that we know we need. You know, I just want to strike that balance, which I think is what you're saying, Doug. You know, you want to make the improvements as often as we can. I just want to make sure we don't do anything in this language, which will be binding and then prevent some of that. So I just want to make sure we feel like those provisions are, give us enough room.
But I think that having this, having us agree that, you know, we want to have this as a goal, that we want to do the best we can on these projects as well, makes us think a little more deeply when we're going to do a repavement and say, make sure we have enough money in there for drainage if we need to to think about it. You know, I'm sure they do that anyway, but this is just another way to reinforce that, that perspective that we, you know, this is important to us. And I think that, you know, I know we do the best we can, but this will just be another reminder to do that. And says at the end, you know, that, you know, if you, you can get a waiver if, let's see, exact language here, that strict application of this article does not for the purpose or objectives of this article. Department of Public Works or Reviewing Agency may require documentation to be submitted and stamped by a qualified PE. I mean, if you, if we need to add language that says that exactly what Mr. McLaughlin said, if it just can't be done, if there's no room for improvement, then, you know, that's, that's a waiver. Maybe that's something that we can add if needed. So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Another possibility is that you just actually define those things that don't have to go through the routine review. You know, like potholes, for instance. I mean, there's going to be some type of maintenance work that could pretty easily be excluded because it doesn't increase the impervious surface, though therefore it's not going to increase the runoff. You know, it seems like we ought to be able to come up with some wording that basically says this kind of work would not require as much of a review.
That's a good point, Sam. Mr. McConerty, then, could you comment on that? Am I asking you then, when, if you were to give up this exemption, am I asking you to create a lot more paperwork? Is there a big filing process that goes on with this? Or is it just something that you have to keep in mind as you're doing your ordinary work?
So I passed the torch on that a few years back to the town engineer, Jim McLaughlin. But what I've done, what we've done over the years is when we come to these areas of these roadways where we work at, there's different types of storm drainage that you can do, okay? You can put basins in the ground is one thing and that for us would be preferable. But if we start going off the road and building vegetated wetlands and deep swales and pipes like that, it becomes burdensome for us after it's built on a maintenance schedule. So then we have to keep on keeping that cut, keeping it clear, keeping it cleaned out. So a maintenance schedule on that for us would become burdensome down the road. So in years past, when we've worked with the Conservation Commission, we said, we're going to improve this. There's some basins that they're bad basins. We're going to replace them. We're going to replace them. We're going to add additional basins so the water will not get out to the ponds or wherever it's going out of an outfall. We're going to catch as much as we can by adding additional basins in the ground that'll go there. But if we're going to start talking vegetated wetlands and things like that, it just becomes another burden task for us. And if we add these to many of the roadways that we're working, it just becomes a lot of work for us. And then we will be looking for more staff to be going and cleaning out the edges of the road and the stuff.
Can you comment to that, Mr. McLaughlin, please? I know you said that we could delete the, the exemption for the roadway maintenance, but Mr. Patterson brings up a good point. I don't want to open a can of worms here where if you just want to do some patching cracks and filling potholes and you shouldn't have to have a bunch of paperwork to file to do that. And I just want to make sure I'm clear about what it is I'm asking for here.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting that we need to get an exemption for a pothole repair or patching. I was thinking more along the lines of repaving a roadway. And if there are places where it's not, not physically possible to accomplish what we'd like to do, then file that paperwork, which, which as you mentioned, is at the end of the that last section or section 10, asking to be exempt from that particular requirement. But as far as the, you know, the, the things that we've been doing on the last few projects, probably not Catherine Lee Bates, but on Garnet, for example, you know, we did put in swales. And those are BMPs that we are keeping an inventory of. And every year, as, as Mr. Christopher mentioned, you know, we're reporting that to EPA that we have X number of them and they're all being inspected. And that's part of the annual reporting process that we go through every year. So, you know, and a lot of it rely on consultancy, CEI to go out and make those inspections on the BMPs that we do have in place. And as we add them, we're adding those to our inventory also. So I, I think the pothole question is to me, I would say that we should be able to do that without any, any question. And it's really more of a repaving project or some other type of significant maintenance project that we'd be looking to file some type of a request for an exemption.
Okay.
Yes, I guess if I may add, I have, I have two points. So the first point is that these regulations are only triggered if you are disturbing an acre or more. So if you're just going out and filling potholes, none of this really will apply. So Jim, Mr. McLaughlin, that's kind of your point. Mr. McConerty, getting back to your point, you are, you are correct in that what the town is currently as drafted, you are going to be exempt from building additional stormwater best management practices. So these are things like your constructed wetlands, fire retention areas, water quality swales, infiltration bases, tension basins, et cetera, et cetera. And the benefit of being exempt from having to build those things amongst other, other reasons is that building these BMPs can be very costly. And if you're looking at having to, if you're looking at paving or repaving a road and having to treat stormwater runoff from an entire acre of impervious area that isn't currently treated, there's a substantial cost associated with, or there can be a substantial cost associated with building these treatment BMPs. I mean, it's, it's far above and beyond just building catch basins, manholes and pipes to convey that stormwater. You need to have, amongst other things, you need to have space to be able to design and build these stormwater BMPs to be able to treat it, infiltrate it, filter it somehow. So that's, that's kind of the way it's worded right now. And it's entirely up to the town. I mean, you, you, you can make yourselves essentially have to pay to design and treat your stormwater. But the EPA permit does allow communities that, that have just a relatively simple repaving project or a small, you know, if you had a bike lane, you're allowed to not have to treat all of your stormwater runoff from these projects. You know, again, you don't have, you can, you can exempt your exemption, I guess, for lack of a better term. But, you know, I just want to, just kind of want to throw it out there that, you know, there, there's a cost to having to design and build these, these, these things.
Yeah.
I'm going to take Doug's side a bit here. We're kind of worried about the environmental impacts that we're creating and we live in an area where it's very obvious what's going on. So I don't want to make the burden too light that we just simply keep doing things the same old way. So it seems like there needs to be some sort of a, a middle road here where we can say there needs to be at least a review for potential, you know, environmental impact to decide whether we go through a formal review process and put in some of these BMPs or whether we just simply say, look, this is not going to significantly change the runoff. And we, we wouldn't expect any kind of a, a significant increase in impact. You know, I, I have the same concern that Doug has and it seems like we ought to be able to find language that kind of defines how we make that decision.
And so now we've talked about the environmental concerns. The roadways are a huge contributor, you know, between phosphorus and so forth. We've got a milk pond that we're working on now. We've got big expensive project trying to repair this pond. It's severely impacted and primarily by, seems to be phosphorus, which is roadway runoff. So we are paying an environmental price right now by, you know, not adopting this. But here's the other part of this. I see that throughout the document, it relates to third party or DPW will review the plans or its agent. I know that refers back to that third party review. Are we then, if we now say that we're not exempt, are we going to subject ourselves to a third party review by a private engineering? Or do we want to think about? That's the, that's the second half of why I want to hold ourselves to the same standard. That's what we're putting the private community through. Because does the DPW Engineering Division want to be scrutinized by a third party to make sure that its plans are up to speed? Because I know that we've, I've talked to, I talked to Noreen Stotman today to try to understand better about the third party review that's been applied and how does it get applied only to 40Bs or across the board? And she explained to me the process that it was, and Tom Bott also explained to me that it was his initiative to, to say, he came to Falmouth and realized that we don't use this third party review option. And so it was agreed, you know, I guess with staff, professional staff decided that it's a best practice and that we would employ it. And so that the ZBA is now doing it. And I understand that it's going to be brought to the Planning Board for consideration of, of adoption because I guess being an elected board, they have to be kind of convinced to adopt it. The ZBA already did vote to adopt it. I wasn't aware of that until today, actually, which it's been over a year. So that's the other part of this is leading by example. If we want to adopt this and live by it and then we have to consider, do we want to exempt ourselves from the third party review? I don't know if this is anything that anybody has thought through, but it's just something that occurred to me that I feel like really as a town, we should lead by example in, in all aspects. And this is just one of them, but it's a big challenge. This one is a a huge expense that we'll be putting ourselves through if we do go that route.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, because it relates to what Doug was just saying, but Little Pond Place is a pretty good example of that. Where the Conservation Commission basically forced the project, which, which came out of Affordable Housing Funds to go ahead and review the runoff from the, that big parking lot there at the corner of Worcester Court and what's the other road?
Springbars.
Springbars Road.
Yeah.
And it was the town's property. So even though it was private parking lot, it was the town that had to control the runoff and Ray Jack stepped in, I think, I'm sure Peter was part of that effort to try to figure out how to handle the runoff from that property and clearly impervious surface. And the town ended up spending about twenty-five thousand to get a third party to come in and look at that. It came out of the Falmouth Portal Housing Fund, but that's not going to be available for anything that's not related to affordable housing.
So if I could, was anybody else waiting to speak? Mr. McConerty was?
Yeah, I, I, I think if that's what the road that we want to get on, no pun intended, I think we really got to put some thought into that. We have 250 miles of roadway, double lanes in Falmouth. And if, and if we're going to look at stormwater regulations for doing stormwater on all the roads, we do, we do the, the best that we can practical allowed within the budgets that we have. But if we're going to be looking at doing that for all the roadways and all the projects we have every year, the projects are going to be slowed down because they're going to be reviewed. We're not going to have, no way, anyway, are we going to have enough money to do the roads or anything that we need to do within the maintenance on it. So I, I think we really want to think about that. It's one thing to be having a, a private, a private parcel, but we have 250 miles of roadway all throughout the town and we're doing it for the benefit of the town. We're not doing it you know, for, for, for butters and stuff, for the entire town, residency of town. So
I understand.
We need some more conversation on that.
Yeah.
Definitely agree. Yes, Megan?
We are not, I mean, I agree with Peter. We are situated differently and we're, you know, it's public work. So it's not a private project by a private entity, whether it's a nonprofit or otherwise. You know, this is the town trying to provide, you know, just as Peter says, just a vast amount of work for the entire community. So, you know, I think the third party review, you know, I just, it doesn't, it seems like it's appropriate, as Sam is saying, it'll come in here and there, but you know, for regular projects, it just isn't going to be practical. We get so many requests already for, you know, people with concerns about, you know, wanting areas repaved and, and wanting, you know, issues addressed. So I think it could just, you know, grind it to a halt.
I know, I understand. I'm just putting it out there because if, if all the, so here's the feedback, and I've been soliciting feedback from all the local engineers that I've known over the years from construction. And the way that it seems on the engineer's perspective is there's, there's two different, let me start over. There's a lot of different levels of quality and, and different levels of what you can achieve in construction of both houses and roadways and everything. If you had unlimited budget, I'm sure Mr. McConerty would agree, you would probably be doing all kinds of different added things to your roadways every time you did them. And some houses are built with unlimited budgets, some, you know, you can take it to the highest level if you want to. But so what happens is when you're building affordable housing, for instance, you're keeping everything very simple, as basic as possible to make a livable residence, but not, you know, fancy. And you're going to keep all your drainage to a minimum and just do what's absolutely necessary to control the water and, and the runoff on your property. and just do what's absolutely necessary to control the water and and the runoff on your property. But now if you were building a mansion, you might think differently. You might want a fancy swale or a garden by your driveway or, you know, some other things. So there's a lot of different levels that you can go to with your designing. And I think what's happening, the feedback I'm getting, it seems to be that it's one thing to have the DPW engineering review your plans and say, sorry, you don't meet the minimum, back to the drawing board, you can, you're going to have to do a little better on this one. But when you got a third party review guy, he is another professional engineer who's thinking of all these other ideas that maybe he would do what he's learned at his past past practice, which is probably another level of higher quality than what was originally proposed. So now you've got a you're paying a guy to design something again, plus a higher level of of design, which is a different product than what was originally designed in some cases. And so you're you're raising the cost of paying him, plus raising the cost of the work, plus taking more time to do back and forth with the reviewing and the arguing. And then you pit one engineer against another and saying, well, just because you do it that way doesn't mean I have to do it that way. And I just feel like it's a contentious situation that we're contemplating here. Miss Megan?
Well, but couldn't, but I think you're, we're talking about two things, because I think you're talking about a policy that maybe we could review at a later day about what you're talking about, sort of third party review versus if we require the town to get a third party review. So I think the only thing we're talking about for tonight would be whether or not we think in this policy needs to be embedded some kind of third party review, which I don't think is feasible. I think the concerns you're raising are a discussion for another night about broader policy, right? I mean, I think
Well, I think that the stormwater management rules and regulations, I think lend themselves to including a third party review when you read the language, even though that specific mention was removed. It still says review by DPW or its agent. And I suppose it could be a similar process as a ZBA where when you go to get your ZBA permit, you have to sign a piece of paper that says, I agree to your terms that I will hire a third party review and subject myself to that condition. So I'm guessing that that would be a similar process here where you'd have to sign this application and agree to that. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? That's your Suso or Mr. McConaty? Has that been decided?
Do you have any insight on that?
Jim, can you explain that the process when they come in for the storm waters with the openings and the review that you do?
Yeah, so generally, we would do it in-house. And one thing I do want to point out in terms of the the question about contention and the quality of the review, our review is always very straightforward and simple. It goes back to what the town either zoning by law, subdivision control law regulations are. We don't put a standard above and beyond anything that is already in the town code. And that's really what we review. Everything is that standard and that standard only.
Yes, sir. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you don't do that. I'm saying that that is what you do, and it always has been. And it's a good process. What I'm suggesting is some of the feedback I'm getting from some of these forty B developers and engineers that have worked with them is that when it is a third party outside engineering firm is when the tensions are arising. And that it's not what they're used to with the simple approach that the DPW engineering has taken for many years that's worked well. And it's this new third party review concept with the the professional engineers doing the review that's bringing in that tension because it's almost like throwing down a challenge. Can you do better? And and the other engineer, I mean, like I said, you can always do better if you if you want to. And if you reviewing somebody else's project, it's easy to to pick it apart and say, well, I could do this. I could, he should have done that, and I could have done this. That's, I never second guess another contractor because I don't know what the thought process with the owner and the contractor previously was. So I I never I don't have any opinions about other people's work because I just don't know how it how it came to be. But I think this is a tension that we're contemplating because we're we're experimenting with it now with the ZBA decisions and planning board is getting ready to think about it too. And it's just, I think it's a a burden. And the only reason I raised it tonight for consideration of third party review by the engineering was not because I think that that's a good idea, but just to think about what it is to be, you know, going through that. And I know I'm not, Mr. McLaughlin, I don't indicate that that tension came from your staff because I think these guys already miss you. Dealing with these other people.
Oh, I understood. I I understand what you're saying. I think to get back to the to the, I guess, the initial question, we would normally review what I would call the straightforward and and simple projects. The larger projects, if you're talking about and and you know, as as Nick has mentioned previously, all of this review is limited to anything that's disturbing over an acre of land. So in in most cases, it ends up being forty B type project where there are a number of units and a large piece of property. And those, I would say in all likelihood, that probably are already going to be going through a similar review with with the zoning board. So in that case, you know, we really don't have to add an added review because it'll be the same level of the same standard that that gets reviewed in terms of the drainage and the stormwater management requirements that are required by the the state manual. And e- everyone will have to conform to that anyway. So I I wouldn't see that it's going to be an issue in most, nearly all projects, I would say, would be reviewed internally.
Okay. I don't want to keep dragging this out. I know I've made it take a long time, but do we feel like there's any of these comments or suggestions that have been made tonight or something that should be voted? I would consider making a motion on the the one for not exempting ourselves as a town from this. And if other language needs to be added at the end where as we were saying, where you just don't have the opportunity to to do these type of things that would be the best practice that you would do if you could, I would say that that language could be added if it's needed. I don't personally, I don't think it is needed, but if if you staff reviews it and feels that I'm wrong, and other language is needed, then I would welcome that. And that's the main thing that I have. The third party review is not actually mentioned, so I don't have a suggestion for that. I do have a concern that because the one acre is the trigger, I'd be concerned about somebody that owns a property that's, say, one point two acres and wants to add a garage to their house. Would that trigger this process? And what might they be?
Disturbing.
Disturbing.
So it's not the size of the parcel, it's just, it's how much of, you know, land is going to be disturbed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the annual reporting we can't get out of, so I'm not going to suggest anything for that. What about the, is a third party review going to always be required? I imagine it is, huh? Is that going to be the new, the new standard going forward?
Just, obviously, it's a consideration for each board, but I think my experience has been in in other communities that it's not that unusual. In fact, it's probably more common than not that that's a standard practice. So I would expect that that type of thing would continue.
I did talk at length with Mr. Bott about it and just the the fact that in his mind, he was very surprised that Falmouth doesn't use it because we're sort of old school with having our own in-house staff review plans. I'm just, I feel like it's it's always worked. And I know there's a huge workload and I wish we could just hire another person just to sit in the office and do plan review and make that same service that our town has always done. And honestly, I think it's something I I wish we had had a chance as a board to talk about that policy if we were going to adopt that townwide because it may be professional best practice, but it just seems like it's something that's a service that is being provided now in our town that we're taking away. And it seems to me that's a policy issue that I think this board probably should have considered prior to the implementation of. And I know Mr. Bott explained, it's his suggestion as a best practice for a town planner to to recommend that. And I understand the thinking of it, but I just, I I'm not sure that we're really exercising that latitude that we have because I watched the planning board meeting last week and Mr. Ahmet was there as an attorney representing a four unit subdivision. And he was asking for relief from the third party review. So I get the feeling it's going to just be used, you know, on all the projects. If it's only a four unit subdivision that it's being applied to and he's asking for relief. And the planning board has has voted not to do this third party review, but yet planner puts it in the decisions because he feels it's best practice. So and apparently it's been adopted as a town policy. Is that right, Mr. Suso? It's an official town policy? The, is it fifty dash oh three or whatever the policy is.
I'm not aware of any formal town policy on it.
Okay.
I believe it's board by board.
Independent and has the authority to do so.
Okay, excuse me. I must have misunderstood that. So are we implying the third party review will be a part of this? When it says the DPW or its agent? I'm just trying to understand what I'm voting for, if it's really going to be that language. If if it's going to be discretionary or always required. I'd love to see the engineering continue with its its practice of impartially reviewing these and holding them just to the standard of you know, what's in the bylaw, if we can, as much as possible. Just want to understand the intent.
Yeah, I think that that is the intent. I think that, as I mentioned, there's probably situations where another board will be implementing a fifty three G review that will overlap it. And I think we can certainly provide whatever review is needed on our end for for nearly all of these projects, Mr. Chairman. I think there may be an instance where something is so large and it's not a forty B that we may require some assistance, but I would say that would be a a very limited, a very limited case. And the other, the other thing that is that, again, just going back to the the stormwater management reporting in the state's stormwater handbook, those are all things that that normally would be implemented or the the review policy that would be looking to hold applicants to. It's all spelled out by Mass DEP in the the stormwater handbook. And it's also part of what all of these applicants would end up be be doing on their own through EPA. So for example, someone that's that's developing more than or disturbing more than an acre of land right now today in the town of Fallon, they required through by EPA regulation to file notes of intent with EPA saying that they're going to be doing X, Y and Z. And then it's incumbent upon them to develop a stormwater management plan that's consistent with the the state handbook and have all those things in place. The issue is that it's a self-reporting type of system with EPA right now. And but all those things are required and the applicant's required to do all that currently. So there's all, there will be an awful lot of overlap in what's already expected and what our regulations require. In fact, it's it's basically the same same requirements, except that EPA is mandating that that individual towns adopt those types of regulations also.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it. Well, then I'm going to move back to just my original concern was if we can find a way to not exempt ourselves, but yet not create a nightmare, that's my motion to amend this. And I will leave it at that. And I want all my other concerns and suggestions, I'll let go because they don't seem practical. And I'll take you for your word, Mr. McLaughlin, that if you can try to keep that third party review to a minimum and reduce costs and friction with these engineers, I appreciate it. Is there a second to that motion to not exempt ourselves from the stormwater regulations?
I I feel like we need to have some kind of a yardstick that decides just what we exempt and what we don't. I I just think there's a level of detail here that's missing. And there's not enough specificity in my mind for us to make a decision like that now.
I would agree with that. It's a big question mark that I've opened up here. I don't want to hold this up. Is this timely? That needs to be approved?
It is fairly time sensitive for us to continue to comply with federal stormwater guidelines.
Can we put it on at our next meeting?
Per EPA's, sorry, per EPA's permit requirements, these were supposed to be in place by the end of June. And a an annual report is going into EPA tomorrow, one way or the other, depending on.
Sorry, Nick.
That's fine.
So this would be my suggestion. I mean, we're hearing that I I would suggest that we vote it as is for now. It doesn't mean we can't amend these when we have some more specific language. Am I incorrect?
EPA doesn't care. I mean, and so this, this is really a local, this is your local bylaw.
I would, I would like to get it done since it's very overdue. And I think we need something in place and not just kind of kicking the can. And then we could potentially work on some of that more specific language around what you're raising, Doug. And I think we could amend that. And that's not probably a problem. We need Frank to weigh in and maybe Nick and and engineering helps to just, you know, really tailor that language to meet those concerns that we've talked about tonight. But I'd like to vote it as is for now so that we can make that step forward and putting these regulations in place, which you know, is better than having nothing, you know, of this specificity in in place. That's what I would recommend. And then we can get some language from Frank and from the folks who need to weigh in and we can take a look at that.
Second.
Okay. I guess I would agree with that.
Approach, just just real quick, EPA has indicated in some of their more recent webinars and correspondence that they they really are looking at these regulations. They really are going to be looking for these regulations to be in place. So I I I would, I like that approach.
Okay, I guess I'll give into that. Good, good suggestion, practical. So we have a motion by Mrs. English Braga to accept the stormwater regulations subject to review and amendment later with fine tuning from who would be doing the work, Mr. Duffy, will you add that language to facilitate us being able to adopt these and not exempt ourselves?
Yes.
Okay, and second by Mr. Patterson as such. And so I'll take a vote of the board, Mr. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
It's English Braga.
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Sorry for all the questions, but it is a pretty big subject. So I appreciate you taking the time to explain it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for being here, guys. Uh, next is vote to adopt an order of taking for the layout of Winter, Winter Drive East Side fifteen minutes. But this is a pretty easy one. We've looked at it before. Do we want to go through it all, Mr. Suso?
Mr. Chairman, we, it came to our attention that when the, you know, there's a required notice to adjacent property owners on these takings. And when the notice went out, it was anticipated this would be an in-person meeting. It was subsequently changed to a a virtual Zoom meeting. And it's come to our attention that some of the residents had anticipated coming to Town Hall for the this hearing. So given that, the board may wish to carry this for one week to your next meeting on October fourth at seven thirty, just to accommodate those that may want to come in person and speak to the board.
Sorry. I guess we had COVID fear when we went back to Zoom on this one. I kind of regret that now.
Um, I would so move.
Okay.
Okay.
There's one thing I we've still got Doug Jones's name on this, and I think Angie needs to be replaced. That needs to be the substituted for his name. Uh, just when you come back with it.
Right, just I I spoke to Diana about that. That's just for strictly for information purposes only. And if town meeting votes that, then it'll come back to the board in correct form with the proper signatures on it. And after town meeting acts is when you would actually be putting in your final signatures.
I'm seeing some
Yeah, we got some comments.
About to say the same thing that a lot of the folks.
Chilled up.
Yep.
Yep. Sorry, folks. Yep. Sorry, folks, about that. We'll be in person next week, right, board?
But it sounds like, I think what they're saying, Doug, if I may, it looks like they're all now on Zoom and they all want the, it sounds like they were all. Looking for to speak on it favorably, so maybe we can have the hearing. It sounds like, although, is that a problem, Frank? Because it was said to be in person, maybe, and it's a public notice?
I would be cautious and and do it next week.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, folks.
All right.
They don't want to be continued.
This item be continued to October fourth.
I would second.
Okay, all those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
And Brown, aye. Sorry, folks, we have to be cautious with the legalities.
But just to, but just to remind them that this doesn't really delay the project because this still needs to go to town meeting. Correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so just so the folks that that are here, I'm looking at Mr. McDonald or or Miss McDonald. They are going, it's got to go to town meeting anyway. So it wouldn't, it doesn't change the timing of it.
I think they're just not happy about having sat through an hour of this meeting and. Have it delayed, but we don't know who was not on Zoom and missed it because. They don't have a computer or who knows what reason.
We can sympathize with them.
Sorry, folks. And next is the shade tree hearing for those two big trees out in front of the library, an application by the Falmouth Parks Department for the removal of two. American Elm Shade Trees, three hundred Main Street Falmouth and. Public notice and that's the Winter Drive.
I have the notice, I can read it.
Do you have?
Yes, okay, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter eighty seven, section three and four, a public hearing will be held on Monday, September twenty seventh. Seven thirty PM in the selectman's office at fifty nine Town Hall Square. Is this going to be the same issue before I go any further? Mr. Duffy? Is it going to be the same problem? Was this notice?
Of the notice.
No, there's no, there are no specific advances to this case.
Okay, thank you. So the it's under, sorry. Town Hall Square, Falmouth Master, consider the removal of the following public trees, three hundred Main Street, removal of two American Elms. Diagnosis stem and branch cankering caused by. Bostresphoria and Phomocystis. I'm saying that wrong, but new street trees will be planted for their replacement. The trees identified above have been posted for public inspection. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden. Prior to or during the hearing. And then it gives the address of Mr. Pearson.
Hello, everyone.
Yes, welcome, Mr. Pearson.
So as you guys, I'm sure have seen driven down Main Street, both trees are completely defoliated. They've been in a. Severe decline for the past five or six years and this year. They've just succumbed to the the lights that Megan spoke about. There's no way to bring them back. No, there's no arbicultural means or methods to do anything to bring these trees back. So at this point, the parks would like to remove them before they become an imminent hazard.
Right. It's a shame, but I don't see any other way out of it. Any comments from the public or the board? Yes, actually.
This is just like a legal question is, I'm just curious on on why these specific trees or trees like this would have to come to the board. And not just, why don't they just have the authority to take them down? I'm just curious.
Do, I I think because of the historical value of these trees, we wanted people to weigh in and ask questions. In normal situations, we wouldn't if this was a side road somewhere, but because of the historical significance. And them being such historic trees in downtown Main Street, a lot of people have a connection with these trees, I'm sure. So we just want to give the opportunity. For residents to ask questions.
So we usually do it with shade trees. We've done it with some that aren't even quite as impressive, but. The public can be really, and I get it, can be really connected and, and you know, to the way that those trees change the. You know, the layout of the town. So we usually have those shade tree hearings when we have to remove them, even when they're not as. Significant as these sometimes.
Right.
Okay.
And we're, we're acting as like the commissioners of the roadways as a select board, we're responsible for what happens in the roadway. That's why we do the ever source approvals. And licensing of a fence that might be too close to the road and so forth. Because that that way it's a public forum, whatever's happening to the roadway.
Okay, thank you. And I did ask Julian if Jeremiah did have the authority to go ahead and remove it if it was a danger before we got to vote on it. So and when he said yes, it just made me curious, so.
Yeah, that's that's happened before. There's a couple of times when it's just was too risky to to let it go. And then we review it after the fact, so the public knows what happened, but we still have the hearing. But sometimes if it's a dangerous situation, we'll, he'll just go ahead if he asked it, but he still notifies us by email. That in his opinion, this this has to happen and we can't wait two weeks for the next meeting. So.
What are you going to plant, Jeremiah?
What's that?
What will you plant, do you think?
I don't know. It's kind of a a hard place because these trees died because of stress. Mainly because they were, you know, they grew out of their rooting space. They were so big, they're right up against the roadway. I don't want to put something there that's going to have the same problem in eighty years. Luckily, Brian Dale's put in sequential planting behind those trees, knowing that these trees would eventually come down. So I have to put all those things into factor and come up with something.
Would you consider possibly putting them on the other side of the sidewalk? So you could put something bigger if you wanted to?
On the opposite side on.
No, no, just closer to the library on the other.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there would be a setback planting. Like I was just saying, there is a setback planting already there that they planted twenty years ago.
Okay.
What we could do is plant them even somewhere else.
And then maybe some little cherry trees on the street edge or something.
Something smaller or ornamental, but I would definitely would not want to put a large shade tree there that's going to affect it in the future.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Move, I would move to.
Close the hearing.
The hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Is there a motion to approve the removal of these two trees?
So moved our, our move, we approve the removal of two American Elm trees at three hundred Main Street Falmouth.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you.
And then next we have flow neutral bylaw, evaluation and request for variance for Ilpon Realty. Eighty seven Water Street Woods Hole, parcel forty nine A zero one zero zero three zero zero zero. Continued from September thirteenth twenty one. And we've allowed fifteen minutes. Mr. Ahmet, welcome. Dr. Taylor is not with us this evening because she had a couple of vaccinations that made her feel ill and. Just didn't really want to be able to get on with us tonight, so I hope that doesn't change your. Opinion about participating this evening.
Oh, I think we should go forward, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. I certainly hope Dr. Taylor does well.
Okay, thank you. So we should be ready to public hearing, I guess, before we get started?
You can do that if you want me to.
Yes, thank you.
Notice is hereby given that the select board in the town of Falmouth withhold a public hearing on Monday, September thirteenth twenty twenty one at seven thirty PM. In the select board meeting room, Town Hall fifty nine Town Hall Square, Falmouth Mass. On the application of Ilpon Realty LLC for wastewater flow variance under chapter one eighty, section fifty six of the Code of Falmouth. The so-called flow neutral bylaw for a grocery store slash deli and a proposed sixty seven seat restaurant at eighty seven Water Street in Woods Hole. Per order of the Falmouth Select Board, and this was printed on the September, in the September third, Falmouth Enterprise, and as noted, continued from that date till today.
And before we get started, if I could just answer a question from the previous folks that were on for the Winter Drive. The last question is, so where is next week's meeting? I feel like we should have probably been at Town Hall tonight and maybe it's my mistake that we're on Zoom. Can we all agree now that we'll be live next week? Would that be comfortable for everyone? Or do you want to wait till Mr. McGann gives us his update and tell us where he's at?
That would probably be a prudent thing to do.
Listen to us.
We'll listen to Mr. McGann. I'm sorry, we're not going to answer that right this second, but we will answer it before the end of the meeting tonight. And likely at Town Hall, but we'll wait for guidance. Thank you, Mr. Ramet. Sorry for the interruption. Attorney, are you ready to discuss this project? Did you want to go, or you want to just wait for questions?
Very, thank you. You may want to elevate Jeff Parish, the principal of. The applicant LLC in case there are any questions that he should answer.
Very well, Mr. Shanahan, could you search for Mr. Parish and promote him to panelists, please?
As I've said in correspondence to the board, I think the case for the variance under the flow neutral bylaws well set. Forth in the application letter to the board. And this is a matter which at least the proposed restaurant use. At eighty seven Water Street in Woods Hole. Has been reviewed by the planning board favorably and by the zoning board of appeals. Some eight hundred and thirty people, mostly residents of the town. The who's who of of people in Woods Hole. Have signed a petition to the Board of Appeals. In support of this application and the Board of Appeals has voted unanimously to have a favorable. Decision granted from their part. So I've mentioned that because there's a great support. For this, and when you look through that petition, you realize just all of your friends who go into that market in. In Woods Hole, there's been a market there for a hundred years, but it's a difficult business to sustain. There's a lot of competition, obviously, more and more from delivery services. Parking has been a problem in terms of deliveries. And it's just a challenge. And before the parish has bought the property. This market, which previously had been in operation in Woods Hole for about a hundred years, had been closed for three years. And they haven't been able to stay open all the years throughout the year, which they'd like to do. So the Woods Hole Market is an extremely important institution for Woods Hole. So how do you make it work? Well, one way is what we're proposing to have a restaurant, it's not a big restaurant, but it, there's a lot of synergy. With the market, the same deliveries are would be made. There's a food that won't go to waste because there's more ways to get it out to the public. It will be better for giving people jobs and attracting people. Year round, which is the hope that the restaurant can operate. There's already a deli in the facility and seating for the deli, but because of the nature of. Of the grocery store and the deli being part of it, it's not classified as a restaurant. So there really actually already are sixty nine seats that serve the deli operation. The restaurant will actually have a couple fewer seats. But it will serve a sit-down breakfast and a sit-down dinner, so they'll, it will be active more hours of the day than the deli. So there's a a need for this restaurant, certainly an appropriate use on Water Street. The adjacent property Captain Kidd has an occupancy permit for three hundred and four people. And this is a sixty nine seat restaurant. The restaurant on the other side of the property, Shuckers, has a greater. Considerably greater occupancy as 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 well. And in order to allow business properties to convert to restaurant use, there is a history of the. Board of Selectmen granting variances under the flow neutral bylaw. Estia on Falmouth replaced a bank and Estia has over two hundred seats. Three times the size of what we're proposing. So I give that as an examples of of previous decisions by the board. I hope that this is is actually a no-brainer. There is capacity in the system, the sewer system for. The proposed flow. We obviously cannot in this location install a title five septic system. And there's provision in the flow neutral bylaw specifically. For situations like this, that where the. Board of Selectmen feels the public will be served where the overriding purposes of. Regulation are served, and in this case, by keeping Woods Hole's only. Grocery store in business are helping to see that happen. There was a reasons for the selectmen to grant the variance as requested. I hope I've convinced you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I see Jeff Parish is is with us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, I meant. I did ask a couple of questions earlier and my questions were answered satisfactorily. And I have a question from the board in regard to the operation of the restaurant. I mean, it's pretty clearly spelled out and you've included all the decisions from the other entities that have approved it. The one stipulation that I would ask that we make is that. I don't want to see the restaurant be successful and then the market go away, so I would like to condition the. Operation of the restaurant contingent upon the continued operation of the market, if that's agreeable.
Well. There's every intention to continue the market. I would point out that the. Decision of the Architectural Access Board specifically allows. The use of the property with the variance that that the state granted. For the market and the restaurant. I would suggest simply a requirement to return to the board to review the decision and. If there are any changes to the operation on the first floor. The fact is that the changes, changes on the first floor might well. Effect the. The sewage flow, and so I think it'd be reasonable to ask for review. But it's also possible that the capacity of the municipal system will be different in the future. In fact, we expect it will be in there. This might, there might be plenty of. Capacity available. So certainly if that's the case, I don't think that it'd be appropriate to limit the uses. Might be perfectly reasonable at that point for the restaurant to expand, but there's no intention to do those things. The intention is to support the restaurant. I'm sorry, the grocery store and you might, Jeff Parish might have a comment about that.
Okay, I just want to make one comment before I go to Miss Scott Price. So it seemed like in the Architectural Review Board, the original decision was not favorable. But it was reconsidered because of the importance of the market and. Also, you you mentioned you had a petition from, I think you said eight hundred and fifty people. Who supported the continuation of the market? Is that, what was the?
Actually, actually, the original decision of the Architectural Access Board was favorable. It was.
Excuse me.
But there were some conditions which weren't, were not well thought out. And we asked to revise the language. Some of the language might have been difficult for. A bank lending on the property to go on specifically. It was an approval that was limited to ownership of the property by the present owner.
I see.
Start a restaurant and go to all the expense and not be able to get a mortgage because of that didn't make sense. So they made some changes, but they, but it was an original approval.
I see. I misunderstood the request for reconsideration. So. How would the condition to continue this use on the first floor be problematic? For Mr. Parish or whoever wants to answer that? Would that, would that be a problem?
Excuse me, it was breaking up there for a second.
I'm sorry. So I was just asking Attorney, I meant that if we're approving this. Additional restaurant use because we need to have some, you need to have some more income. To help support the operation of the market. I was asking Attorney, I meant, would it be then acceptable to condition? The approval on the continued operation of the market rather than. Just approving a restaurant per se that maybe then would expand and become successful. And then maybe you become so successful that you decide to get rid of the market. I'm hoping that's not the case, and I don't think that's. I'm hoping that's not the case, and I don't think that's I don't think that's the intent, but.
Were that again, that is not the intent, but were that to happen, then there would obviously be a further increase in flow and requirement to come back to you. I would suggest you could first have language which is entirely consistent with what you're saying, Mr. Brown. This simply says that any change in use of the property will require review by the by the board.
Okay.
That covers. I have no intention of 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 turning the place into a full restaurant. I mean, my, 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 my heart and soul has always been in the market. And I think most people know that I own the Westside with market, my family owned it for almost forty years. And we've owned this market for eleven years after it was pretty much defunct for three years. So it's important to me to to do what's best to run the market, and that's why we're here tonight is to be able to to add to that that way. And yes, I have no intention of of removing the market from from Woods Hole at all.
Right. I don't I don't say that you do. I'm not suspecting that you do have that intent. I was just thinking of for future generations that may, when you retire, who knows what other people will think? And I'm not sure if it's, you know, something that's appropriate, but I welcome Attorney immense suggestion that any change of use to the first floor would come back to the board for consideration. So.
I think I would have to do that anyways. So, you know, the less language, the better. But I mean, I think anything that I do, I've always pulled permits for anything. Anybody does, I would have to come back before the appropriate boards anyway, I believe.
Okay, that sounds good. That's all I've, that's my only concern. And otherwise, I'm ready to discuss taking a vote or welcome any other comments from the board.
I would move that we, oh, sorry, unless there are any further comments, I would move that we close the hearing.
Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. I didn't ask if there was any comments from the public. So before we officially go away and just take a look in the chat, could we confirm that there's nobody waiting to speak to this?
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I don't think there is. We would have seen him by now.
I would.
So we've closed the meeting. Now we'll take a vote on the approval.
I move approval.
Patterson, second.
Oh, I think Ms. Scott Price beat you to it.
That's fine.
I got one in.
All right. And so I'm going to let you vote first this time. Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Okay, Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Good luck with the new operation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks for keeping this icon going.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, next, I believe we have a wetlands dock hearing, Chappicote Associates installation of two twelve inch timber piles on existing licensed timber pier adjacent to license and existing stone jetty in and over the waters of Westfalmouth Harbor located at twenty Associates Road, West Falmouth. Public hearing notice. And I'll read the notice, I guess. Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under section two forty dash seven seven Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, at seven thirty P M in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall. We know now that we've changed to Zoom, and my question would be, Mr. Suso, are we going to have any problems with going forward with this? I mean, we were properly advertised, were we not, as far as the actual meeting location?
Yes, I don't think we have any problem.
Okay, thank you.
I think the only problem was because of the notices to the abutters on the other one.
I think so, right. Okay, so I'll continue fifty nine meeting room, fifty nine Town Hall Square on the application of Chappicote Associates for permission to perform a waterfront improvement project, which includes the installation of two twelve inch timber piles on an existing licensed timber pier adjacent to a licensed and existing stone jetty in the waters of Westfalmouth Harbor located at twenty Associates Road, Westfalmouth, Mass. Area affected is Westfalmouth Harbor. Interested parties who may review the file on in the hearing office on this hearing at the office of the Select Board. And that was publication date was Friday, September tenth, twenty twenty one, and Friday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty one, in the Falmouth Enterprise. So that is it, and welcome to Mr. McGrath. Are you going to tell us a little bit about this project before we could vote?
Permission to share my screen?
Yes, sir.
While you're doing that, Mike, I just happened to pass that project yesterday, and it appears there are two piles there already. Is this a replacement of those piles or is this an after the fact approval?
No, we're adding.
Adding two more?
Adding to this the structure. So the for the benefit of the audience, the project is located at the entrance to Westfalmouth Harbor. So I put a geodetic map up there, and our work is actually, I assume you can see my
Yes.
cursor, and we're talking about this particular structure. So this particular structure and actually dates back to eighteen ninety one. So what there is out of Chappicote Island is there is an existing stone pier. I'm sorry, stone jetty, and on top is a constructed walkway. And there is a timber pier off to the side. Then there's a ramp down to a float. And so it's at the end of a right of way. And the bottom line is the residents of Chappicote Island have rights here to to do this. And what there is, we're proposing to add two piles that I show the two brown spots. And we're coming here because under the Falmouth Zona by law, the selectman have to issue a special permit if we were to alter a wetland. And the whole point of this is I submitted a series of photographs so you would get you a better idea of what goes on. So this photograph shows the timber pier that's at the end. And this timber pier is was constructed a long time ago when the boats that were that came out here were substantial boats. Now we have a lot of people that use smaller boats, such as, I think you've all seen them. And the small boats are like the small little the little.
Beetlecats.
Beetlecats, thank you. I was at a loss of words, which is not like me normally. So this is the existing float. And the other thing I just wanted to show you was that the the point of showing you this picture was to to give you an idea that what actually happens now is when people use this in the peak times, there's more than one person using it, and it's difficult to to tie up, especially with the how the ramp takes most of the space. So the point of adding the piles would give them the ability to tie up a small boat here and then tie up a small boat here. And so it would increase the capacity for people to come in and drop off and pick up and people to, you know, basically get to their beetle cats. And I think you know that those were not common boats a while ago, but now they're common. So we have received an order of conditions. I'm sorry, it was not an order of conditions. It was a determination of applicability. The current, in other words, I have a conservation approval for this. And we need to amend the the waterways license, and we'll need a Corps of Engineers permit. But the the way this permitting world works is we get the order first, then we get the special permit, then we can apply for the other two approvals. So the bottom line is I would ask the board to approve these two proposed piles. They are innocuous in the long run. One of the points of showing you the picture is there's no significant weeds or or any significant habitat where these piles are being proposed. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you want to have.
Are there any questions from the board? I I just have the one to declare. Oh, sorry, Sam, were you?
No, I I I concur with the Conservation Commission. I think that this is a diminutive mischange and actually probably adds to the safety of people trying to get in in and out of their boats at this location. They certainly don't leave those boats there. They're moored on various moorings throughout the harbor. So this is just simply for convenience.
So these piles are not actually attached to the dock. They're just freestanding for tie up only, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I've seen no other further questions from the board. I would entertain a motion to, is this an official hearing? Close the hearing.
Sorry, I was going to move to closing hearing, please.
Okay.
Second.
A second? All those in favor, and Mr. Patterson is back on top. Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And then motion to approve or disapprove?
I moved that we approve this request.
Okay, is there a second?
Scott Price, second.
Okay. And all in favor, Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you for coming in, Mr. McGrath. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too, thanks, sir.
I hope they continue to leave that ladder on the floating section because that's a sort of a safety feature for anybody that might fall off that jetty or fall off a boat while boarding. Makes it a lot easier for them to get out of the water.
I will relay, I'm sure they're watching, but I will relay your comment to the to the individual that represents the trust that I work.
If I if I could ask an unrelated question, Mr. Suso, this has triggered my my memory. Could you just quickly remind us unrelated to this project of the timeline for the completion of the reconstruction of the riprap there along the roadway? Is that still on track? Do you know?
I believe the that's scheduled to be completed yet this year, calendar year. I'll double check with public works.
And that would be the final phase of that project, right?
Pardon me?
That would be the final phase of that project?
Yes, that's my recollection, yes.
Okay, just thought the people watching might be interested to to get that. So thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGrath. And now we have the next one is a wetlands dock hearing presented by T. I. Campbell, reconstruct here.
I think it's being continued, Mr. Chair. There was a request to continue this to October twenty fifth.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All of those in favor of continuing to October twenty fifth? Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
And Brown, aye.
That was at the request.
Seven thirty, is that acceptable?
I was I was going to say, yeah, sorry, seven thirty, and that was at the request of the applicant, just so the public knows.
Very good, thank you. And then next we have Mr. McGann with a discussion update on COVID nineteen issues and potentially a discussion of masking mandate, but I only put that on there in case you gave us really bad news.
Will do. I didn't know I was getting to pick whether you're a remote or not. I did hear that before, okay.
We're giving you more powers.
I'm going to share, I don't want anymore. I don't want anymore.
Powers are limitless.
Let me share a screen, please.
Yes, sir.
Except.
Okay. You guys seeing my screen with a chart on there on the left?
Oh, yes, I see the dip at the end there. I like that.
Well, dips are good, dips are good. Past performance is no indicator of future performance, if you ever talk to a stockbroker.
Disclaimer.
So, yeah, so I did make the this week's yellow as as our previous discussion. So we've got, as I've last checked this afternoon, thirteen for this week, which is about halfway through the week. Last week, we're at thirty one ish. So we've definitely seen a drop, which is good. We'll definitely take it. So that's where we are, our case count is nineteen twenty seven. I did want to spend one time minute of this. I'm getting a lot of questions on what this incident rate means, so I would like to spend one minute on it. What the incidence rate means is what your daily cases would be if you had a population of a hundred thousand. The reason why is that way we can Truro and Worcester can be compared on the same incidence rate because they have totally different populations. So eight cases in Truro and eight cases in Worcester is a totally different incidence rate. So what this number means, this twenty six point three means, if Falmouth had a hundred thousand people, they would average, we were averaged this fourteen day timeframe, would have averaged twenty six point three cases per day. The easiest way to look at this is just divide this by three. Our population is roughly thirty three thousand. So our average incidence rate was eight, eight point two for the timeframe that the state provided it. I don't go out and put the eight point two because then the state says twenty six point three, and then we have sort of looking different on the incidence rate. So what the state does is give you the incidence rate based on your population, daily incidence rate, based on your population, the fourteen day average of a hundred thousand people on that fourteen day average. So that being said, these the eight or so cases and nine cases we were roughly averaging per day in this timeframe is a drop from thirty. It doesn't, it didn't capture a lot of this, the good week we have. It is such a little bit of a delay, so it's still capturing the seventy that we got that we previous to the thirty week we had. So, but there is a drop. So what I'm trying to say is this number is going to continue downward as a result of the last sort of ten days of having less cases. So that's a great sign. Our positivity is also dropping. That'll continue to drop the less cases. We are robust. We're averaging about thirteen hundred tests per week in this town. So we're pretty robust in our testing. So our our line in the sand, you know, you had indicated about mask mandates. The Board of Health that I discussed with the C, this is comes from the CDC, that the the line in the sand is between moderate and substantial. Substantial would be fifty cases or more per hundred thousand population on a daily basis. And so we have not hit that. We were creeping towards it. We got to thirty, as long as we stay below that, that's where the Board of Health stands on it. Hospitalizations have been in that for sort of four to seven range. It's a little bit higher. That's this particular week. I only get that data once a week. Our, that's one of the considerations that you need to look at is the hospitalizations. And then our vaccination rate, which has always been good, we are eighty percent of all eligible residents in Falmouth are fully vaccinated, eighty eight percent have had at least one dose. If you've only had one dose, it's not too late to get your second dose. So go ahead and get your second dose. So that's our numbers as far as vaccinations is shown here by age group. You know, we have, we a little bit less this week, a hundred and sixty one administered doses. We had been over two hundred for the last few weeks. Since Delta came in, people are a lot been less reluctant in some cases have been averaging more. So that's where we are with cases. We're better this last, you know, a week and a half. Our vaccinations, you know, we just did one this week, a school based clinic. We'll continue to do school based clinics and and so we just didn't do one this past week. Another question that we've been getting a lot is third doses are otherwise known as the booster eligibility. I just pulled this off today. Who's eligible to get a booster? Individuals who are immunocompromised due to their particular health condition have been eligible for boosters in Massachusetts if you've gotten either a Pfizer or Moderna dose since August thirteen. The follow, this just came out, the following individuals are now eligible for a boosted dose of Pfizer six months after their second shot, their full series, if they're over sixty five, residents of long term care, between eighteen and sixty four with underlying medical conditions. And the reason why they broke that off, there's different medical conditions that they're looking for. And then people who are eighteen to sixty four are at increased risk for COVID transmission because of their their institutional setting, working in long term care, working in a ER, things of that nature. Do I need to get the other questions that we get a lot? Do you need the same brand? The answer is yes. So you want you, if you had Pfizer for your first series or Moderna, you'd get the Pfizer. If you had Moderna, you get the Moderna at least six months after. J and J, you're out of luck at this point. They just don't have the guidance on Johnson and Johnson shots, if that's what you've got. So you can go to the vax, the vaxfinder dot mass dot gov. I have all this information as well. We'll tell you availability. I happened to go on today. There was availability at CVS at ten thirty tonight, if you needed one. And I didn't realize they scheduled that late, but it did say I could get an appointment at ten thirty at CVS. So, you know, if you go through the process. So there's also this brand new, I put this on our website. This tells you if you've had Pfizer, it can tell you if you firstly fully vaccinated in May, you're eligible in November. If you got the shot, your second series was completed in March, your second dose of your series was completed in March, you can go to September. So that's also on there. You can go to their website as well. So and in terms of what, I want to unshare the screen. So in terms of what the towns, so right now the pharmacies are doing it, we're still waiting for the state to tell us exactly how they want the towns to do it, county to do it. I filled out of, I filled out a fillable form with the state, what we can do, how we can handle it. And we can, we can certainly. I filled out of, I filled out a fillable form with the state, what we can do, how we can handle it. And we can, we can certainly have more clinics beyond what the pharmacy is doing. If the state says, okay, we're gonna start sending you doses or send the county doses, we can do some of the same clinics and more based on what we get from volume. It may be more towards the pharmacies. Right now it looks like the pharmacies can, but as the age group opens up to more and more age groups, then you're gonna have more demand, which means two things I like to say. If you have never gotten your vaccine or you haven't gotten your second dose and you're considering it, there's going to be more demand coming in the fall. So your, your, your ability to get it now is better than your ability may be in the future, right? So that's one thing I wanted to say. And the other ones, if you've got Moderna, I think usually Moderna follows suit with the Pfizer. You'll eventually get this come down and say that Pfizer is now going to be eligible to a similar age group, but they just haven't done that yet. So that moves pretty quick. That's, that was brand new. I saw that this morning. So and that's my update. So any questions?
Nope. Sounds like we're on the right track. I guess we're gonna go back to live meeting next week then, unless any board members still have concerns about that.
It is what it is.
Yep.
It can happen, as you know, Doug, it can happen at any time and.
I do know now.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott. Scott, let me ask just one quick question. When, as it sounds like we're maybe gonna get some guidance on, on some vaccines for the younger kids.
Yeah.
What, would there be a role that we would play or would we just sort of, we don't know yet because we don't know how the state's gonna roll it out?
Well, I could tell you, I think what's gonna happen with schools, we did our first school-based clinic in May, May and June to end last year. We did one in August series and we just did another one on Friday.
Okay.
There's no reason why we can't do that as long as the state gives us access to the vaccine, right? So it goes, right now, the county, the same county, possible county nurses that would have ran the, the fairgrounds, they're the same nurses that come down into a school-based clinic. So my intent is to do the same thing when it opens up to five to 10, as long as it's in my, you know, it's in our ability to get it. I say that only because of what happened this past spring, planning on doing things as health departments.
And you didn't have any.
And we didn't have any and went through the, you know, the jolets and places like that. So that being said, is if we're easily able to order it for the five to 12s that was approved, we'll run a clinic so, you know, as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you.
I was impressed to see 63% of the kids available to get the shots have done so. That's is it mandatory for school? They're not mandating it for school, are they? That's a pretty good, pretty good rate for voluntary. I know people are concerned about it, you know? Nobody wants to give kids shots unless it's really necessary, but it seems like a good idea. Thank you, Mr. McGann. Appreciate it.
Take care, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
So next, we have a presentation on proposed police department renovation. And who is here to talk about that?
Chief.
Chief Dunn is here, I see, coming on. Welcome, Chief Dunn.
Good evening.
And welcome, Jennifer Mullen.
Good evening.
So I think we've talked about this a little bit, but we haven't really had the official word. So let us have it.
Chief, do you want me to go over the budget and then you can go over the floor plan?
Sure.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks for having us this evening. As you know, we're presenting the police department renovation. The finance committee is in the process of their review. They'll actually tour the station on Wednesday to look at, you know, the station now and the chief will go over the planned renovations. As a part of your packet on Friday, we incorporated a project budget. I had that updated with a professional cost estimate as of a couple of weeks ago. So the new project budget is about 1.8 million. The construction estimate is 1.3. We did, one change that we did incorporate into this project is a generator. We put in $150,000 for a generator and the chief might be able to speak to this a little bit more, but we've had issues with the police department generator recently. It's over 15 years old and so we thought it would be prudent to incorporate this into the project budget. So we'll be prepared at town meeting. It will come from free cash. We might use some existing project funds from a bond issue that we can do that. So I'll be looking at that, but we will be requesting the 1.8 million.
Thank you. Any questions on the budget from the board? Thank you. Appreciate the breakdown in the packet.
You're welcome. I did send, Chief, I did send, as you know, the floor plans. They have the rear floor plan, I think, and the front floor plan. If Justin could share his screen, could you do that, Justin, for us?
I only got the council on aging.
Oh, I sent it to the IT help desk. Okay, let me see. All right, so here we go again. You know how I do really well with.
Well, I do remember we had the floor plan sent to us prior to, you know, in a prior email. So if it's not available, I've pretty much reviewed it. I think we all have, don't we not?
And I can, I can answer any questions. We'll walk you through. It's, it's, it's pretty much a first floor renovation.
Right. And it was pretty, made a lot of sense to me rearranging those rooms and providing professional space, so.
And safety. I mean, I just want to highlight, I think there are a lot of safety concerns with this. So, you know, sometimes when people hear renovations, they think you're just trying, you know, to sort of spruce a place up, but a lot of these were, you know, the building has kind of, it's antiquated in the way it's set up. I don't think there's a nicer way to say it. For the size of our department and the volume, there are some safety concerns for how you move through that building that I think this renovation addresses.
Walking through the secure office space to get to the meeting room.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. The way the building's designed now, you've all been in it at one point or another. It is a security, safety issue going on. And it's also a privacy issue for some of our staff, such as the domestic violence advocate will have her own office now. So it's, it's modernizing what we have.
Right. Well, I'm fine with it. Any other questions?
Sorry. Is this the budget?
No, it's the, there were two files. One was the rear floor plan and the front floor plan, but I believe the select board, correct me if I'm wrong, you've seen it before.
Yeah, I think we've all seen it, except for Scott Price. I don't know if you had a chance to see that. Yes?
I, I believe I have. And I've also actually, Chief Dunn gave me a tour of the police station a few weeks ago, so.
Excellent.
Familiar. I did have a question. I'm just curious, just because it's not detailed in here, is the HVAC system in the police department gonna be upgraded now that we understand what's required for COVID things? Has that been included in this?
I can speak to that. There is some money in there for HVAC. With COVID, we will be, I think we'll be as an alternate switching out the boilers. We did talk about that because we had two appropriations, one for the renovation. We had a separate appropriation for the ESCO project for replacing the boilers, so we'll incorporate that. I know there's a different issue with COVID in trying to get more airflow into the station, and that's what we've been doing in other buildings. And I think actually they've been looking at that, Chief, and I think they've addressed that now already. And they've, and we are in the process of ordering more air purifiers as well. So I think the COVID issue with airflow has been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could ask a separate question, I know this is really basically focused on interior renovations, but Chief, was there some sort of problem with the roof? Did that get resolved?
No, the roof, the roof's been, was repaired, oh, five or six years ago. It's a new roof. The roof's not that old.
Oh, so you're in good shape there. Okay.
Yeah, no, the roof was, roof was in great shape. And if we can just go back to the generator issue, the generator is about 15 or plus years old. And we've had problems. And as you know, when we've had some storms, the police department was on generator for, I think, three days before. And we've had some, we've had some issues with it. So it's, it probably should be repaired specifically because it also runs the dispatch because we're in the same building. And if we go down with a generator, we lose communications to both police and fire.
Is there any idea if it would be a good idea to install the new generator and keep the old one as a backup, just in case?
We have a backup. We have, we have a, we have a portable generator, which we have through Homeland Security. It's not particularly ours, but we're in charge of it. And when we have storms, we usually bring it over and we have a separate plug-in box in the back of the building, particularly for dispatch. So dispatch would be operational. The police department would be in the dark.
Okay. Well, I'll leave that to you and the project manager to decide if that might be a good idea or not. I don't know. Okay. Any other comments or questions or should we move to vote?
I don't, do we have to vote it or I don't think we're, are we voting it tonight?
Okay, no voting, just.
I think it's just a presentation and, and just getting it up there.
Okay. Well, I'm all for it. Thanks, appreciate you coming in and telling us about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, John.
Good night.
Next, we're gonna hear from the presentation and vote on applications for funding from Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Acting as a trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, voted on application from Falmouth Housing Corp. for 2.3 million to construct 48 units of affordable rental housing at the intersection of 7063 Main Street and 24th Street Nav. And I don't know, this is not a hearing, so there's no public notice, right?
Correct, no hearing.
Any comments or is there any kind of presentation, Mr. Johnson, stop? Are you here to address this?
All right, yes, I can make some overview remarks if you like. I know this project is at this point pretty familiar to the board members. However, this will be the first time that you're actually voting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to award funding to this project. So this is a pretty significant request, 2.3 million dollars will be our, the largest award that you have considered from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. It is for 48 units of rental housing and those rental units, again, as you know, but for the public who may not have heard, the units are deeply affordable is the term that, that we use. So they're for 30% of AMI, nine units, 50% of AMI, and I'm sorry, AMI is area median income. And 30 units at 60% of area median income. The, the board may want to know the balance in the fund at this time is $2,781,000. This 2.3 million dollar request would bring that available balance down to $481,000. You should also be aware that there is money set aside for affordable housing in Falmouth. These are Cape Cod Commission mitigation funds, and that now totals $457,000. So that's an additional pot of funds that is available to you for the creation of affordable housing as context.
We may be taking that up in the next article.
Perhaps. So again, for the public, the location is a former Cape Cod bank location across from the senior center and police station. So it is a redevelopment of a previously developed area. It is on the town sewer system, great proximity to services and local businesses. And as far as transportation goes, as good as it gets for the town of Falmouth with access to the fixed bus route.
And is that the end of the intro?
That's, that's about all I have by way of overview. Happy to take any questions. And I believe Linda Clark was planning to join us as well, should the board have any questions. Yes.
I would like to comment that I think this is a great value at about $47,000 per unit, I believe it is, somewhere in that range, compared to our maximum would be 100,000 per unit. I think we agreed to raise it up to, and I really appreciate the the economy of scale that we're achieving here by building this big, simple structure that's affordable to build and affordable to live in. You know, one comment I would have to say is, I wonder if we can consider incorporating solar panels the way another project that's gonna be before us after this. I don't know if that's something that can be considered, and I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into the plans, but I noticed when I was reading the application on a different project, the proponent had mentioned that they're seeking additional funding from the town in order to do solar panels, in order to reduce the rental, you know, the electrical costs for the residents in the building. So I'm not trying to, like I said, throw a monkey wrench into the plans here, but just keeping in mind that maybe that's something that we should be thinking of in our, in affordable housing to, to make it more affordable in the long run.
Well, thank you for having me this evening. We did talk to our engineers last week and we plan to, we're discussing making provisions to accommodate solar. We haven't made a decision quite yet, but we are in, in the process of and, and planning for possible solar.
Excellent. Good to hear. And I was just commenting before you got on about how the cost effectiveness of this and the fact that you're only asking for, I think it's approximately 47,000 per unit.
Yeah, 48,000 per unit.
Forty-eight. So I really appreciate the economy of scale provided by the, the type of structure that you're building and putting 48 units in and keeping it very affordable to build as well as for the town to sponsor it. So I appreciate that.
As Peter stated, it's deeply affordable. A lot of 12, it's gonna be 30%. And to give you an idea on the rents with 30%, and those will be subsidized units.
Okay.
One bedroom, including utilities, $547. The 50% units will be 911, including utilities, and the 60% will be $1,094. And these include, like I say, all utilities, air conditioning.
And just, and if I may, just the, the benefit of the, you know, I think we have a track record with the other places that you've built, you know, we've talked about this before. Sometimes building them, you know, it's, well, it's never the easy part, but it, but sometimes it becomes the part that all the focus goes into and the maintenance falls to the wayside. And that is not the case with the other projects. We know the, the sort of level of care and maintenance that the other projects found with Housing Corp. have, have had. And that's a key part because to get tenants in, you know, at those reduced rates is important, but to create a living environment that's safe and, you know, has stability and consistency is also really key. And as a part of that, it makes it a place that's not just affordable, but welcoming and a place that folks can really make their home. So, you know, I think that's a key part that we do already have a track record.
It certainly is, Megan. The, the management office is, is, will remain at 704 Main Street, which is diagonally across from the property. We're, we're self-contained as far as management, our compliance department, maintenance, 24-hour service. We're actually expanding our office again, probably in 2022, to accommodate more units, more staff to, to deal with the management overload.
I was just about to ask you for that and because this is a big responsibility to manage another 48, 48 units. So I'm glad to hear that you're already planning on the additional staff.
We are, we're making provisions.
So you, you'll, so far now, you're planning to continue to do all the maintenance and management in-house?
Absolutely.
That's great news.
Yes. We also are gonna have an office on site for a, a tenant coordinator, 40-hour-a-week position, that will assist residents with social security needs. It's very difficult to navigate the system. Appointments with social security, doctor's appointments, any kind of transportation needs. So that's gonna be a position that's gonna be staffed 40 hours immediately upon occupancy.
Wow, that's a great resource. Imagine you'll have, you probably have people coming from the other buildings to wanna use that service as well, huh?
They may.
Yeah. Okay, well, that sounds really all good. Any questions from the board on other aspects of the project?
I'm really excited about it.
Me too.
We all are. It's gonna, it's gonna be a fabulous project. It's perfect for seniors. The location is, you couldn't, you couldn't get a better location.
For sure. Nice little stroll down to the harbor to look at the reviews and it's gonna be great. Okay, so if there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the funding for this project?
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes, yes, sir. You're muted, I think.
No, I think he lost audio. He's not muted.
Yeah, no audio.
We could see you, but we can't hear you.
I'll try to read your lips. Go ahead.
My audio, you hear me now?
Yeah.
Great. So there is a motion in the memo that we would encourage the board to consider for approval of this project.
Okay.
And I'm going to. And I'm going to, out of an abundance of caution, because I have a feeling I know the way the vote is already going to go, I am going to recuse myself from this vote because of the prior disclosure. And I know, you know, again, there's no monetary component to this, but just out of an abundance of caution, particularly because this is such a large expenditure out of this fund.
Okay, I see I have the, I actually already read the motion as the opening line. So presentation and vote on applications for funding from Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. This, I believe, is the motion that says business three and then A.
No, actually, sorry, we, sorry, I, I know we have put the motion there and sometimes in the past, know that the motion is in the memo itself. I can share it on the screen if you like.
Okay.
At the bottom of the, of the motion here, I'll, I'll put it on the screen.
Oh, I see the motion here. Peter, I have it. Yeah, I, all right, very good. That's the same one. Proposed motion, right? Yes, go ahead.
I was gonna, I was gonna motion.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Scott Price, I move that the select board acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund approve author, the authorization of two point three million dollars to Falmouth Housing Corporation for the construction of forty eight units of affordable rental housing for seniors age sixty two and older and appropriate by the town manager in consultation with legal counsel and to authorize the town manager to execute said letter, oh, said. Well, it's not a letter, but to execute.
You skipped the line that says twenty fourth Scranton Avenue and seven sixty three Main Street, subject to terms and conditions as deemed appropriate.
Just start over.
I'll say, no.
Nope, I think that's good enough.
Okay, it's getting late, sorry.
That's fine.
It is.
Well, we got a long way to go. That's, that's because I talk too much. Okay, so all in favor, start Mr. Patterson.
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price.
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Frogger.
English Frogger, abstain.
Oh, abstain and Brown, aye. Thank you, Ms. Linda Clark for coming in. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very exciting. We really appreciate the town support. Thanks again.
Thank you for your hard work.
And hopefully the, hopefully the zoning board will be able to get through it in a timely way like they, I know that they'll do their best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Next, we have oh, next is the other affordable housing project acting as trustees of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Vote to amend the application form McGansett Crossing LLC for eight hundred fifty five thousand dollars for ten years and some affordable housing at six seven six, six eight eight and seven oh two North Falmouth Highway. Also extend the date of expiration for funding award to December twenty sixth, twenty twenty one and increase the original amount of funding from six hundred fifty thousand to an additional two oh five, five hundred for a total of eight hundred fifty five thousand, five hundred dollars. Welcome, Mr. Galasso.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If anyone can hear me fine.
Yes.
If I may, I just want to give you a quick review of the project. I know some of you may be familiar with it, but some may not. We go through that and then review our requests. I don't know, maybe Peter wanted to do that, but if you want me to, I'll just go ahead. So McGansett Crossing is a project that's been around for a little while. We redesigned it a number of years ago. It's ten units in five duplex townhouse buildings. All units are affordable in perpetuity. The project is designed to meet Energy Star for Homes requirements, which is ten to fifteen percent more stringent than, than the stretch code. Units are all electric. There are no fossil fuels in the building. They will be powered by heat pumps for heating, mini split systems for heating and cooling. We've included children's play area. We did that because we have some units that are three bedrooms and those units typically attract single parents that have, have children. We have a community garden with plots for each unit. Electric car charging stations are included in each one of the enclosed garages that we have. As we know, there's going to be an increase in electric car use over the years. We want to make sure that our tenants have access to that. All the exterior lighting of the, of the building for the driveways and the common areas are powered by electric lamps. We're connected to Open Cape, as we know, is the high speed internet access that will be provided for all the tenants. We're on the Cape Regional Transit Route that goes between Bourne and Hyannis, so we have a bus shelter out front. We, in the package and in my memo that I sent everyone are two letters to support for the additional funding from Cape Lake Compact and from the Town's Energy Committee. When our costs went up due to COVID and lumber prices and other material prices include increased, instead of applying to the town for additional funding to cover those additional costs, we applied to Mass Housing and DHCD and were awarded four hundred and thirty thousand dollars additional funding for the increase in our, in our construction costs. So tonight's request is to, really two requests. One, to extend the original funding until December. We're in the process of closing all the funding for the project with all our lenders. That's Mass Housing, the town of Falmouth and Eastern Bank. And that process should take us probably till the end of October. We asked for a hundred and twenty day extension. The working group agreed to give us to December twenty fifth, one day after Christmas. In order to get everything done, we feel that's adequate time. We'll be able to meet that deadline. The other request this evening is an increase of two hundred and five thousand, five hundred to fund the cost of installing solar panels on all the roofs. This will save our, our, our tenants between a hundred and a hundred and twenty dollars a month. As you know, the only bill they'll get for the units is their electric bill. And that's probably going to save them about between fifty and seventy percent of their monthly utility bill, which will give them additional money to be used for other household needs such as healthcare, food and childcare. When we originally submitted the project to the ZBA, we included rooftop solar. When the ZBA reduced the project from twelve units down to ten, the economics of the project required us to switch to a rental project and also remove the solar panels from the roof. That was probably about three or four years ago. The, when we, the working group approved the request for the extension, but they did not approve our request for additional funding. There were a couple of reasons for that. They didn't feel that the, that he felt that the additional funding requested two hundred thousand could be better used to provide additional affordable units. And while there's no question that that's true, I think the same could be say, said for the increase that we've allowed for addition, for other projects that recently were increased to eighty five thousand dollars, which is the same amount that we're requesting for the total town command, eighty five thousand, five hundred, we are total quest per unit. There was also discussion at the Community Preservation Committee about alternatives. Then the town providing financing for the solar. We have worked with Cape Lake Compact and the energy, in the Town Energy Committee. And we have not been able to identify any resources that will provide a subsidy for solar panels. One thing that we're doing is that we are buying the system if we're granted the funds, which, you know, the developer will own and the tenants will benefit. Many of the other programs that are available for solar are structured such that there are lease agreement, the lease rooftop or finance agreement, and it would not provide the benefit directly to our tenants, which is really what we're after. So what we'd like to request tonight is that you consider allocating two hundred and five thousand, five hundred from the Affordable Housing Fund to be funded from the Affordable Housing mitigation fee paid by Cape, by the Cape Club Redevelopment Project to the Cape Cod Commission that's identified in their permit to be used for the, by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. And that we, at the request of the chairperson, that we solicit two additional bids for the work. Since we've only received one from Katuitt Solar, and we agreed that we would solicit additional proposals besides one that we currently have from Katuitt Solar. So of the two hundred and five thousand, five hundred, a hundred and seventy five thousand, four hundred and thirty one is the current budget for the solar and thirty thousand and seventy nine dollars of additional cost for billing permits and other fees. So I would request your, your consideration for funding that component of our, of our project. We feel it's a very important component for any affordable housing projects. That's what we're trying to send an example on this project, and I heard your comments to Linda too. I'm glad that she's looking at, including solar too. I think it's very important for our community. Now, when possible, we provide renewable energy sources for these projects. So thank you very much. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Welcome. Questions from the board first? Anybody have anything? I just have one, not so much a question, as a comment. I appreciate your taking into consideration my suggestion to put the bid out for the solar rather than just go with a preliminary budget. And in fairness to Katuitt Solar, they should certainly be offered another chance to, to bid that if they want, want to maybe fine tune and sharpen their pencil as a competitive bid rather than I think what they provided earlier was a, probably a price that would be sure to get it done as maybe more than just a competitive price. I don't know how they did it, but I'll leave that to you if I probably want to offer them a chance to, to bid it again as well. Absolutely. Well, thank you for including that. So you know other questions? Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Suso?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to introduce a note of caution. The one comment about seeking out funds from the Cape Cod Commission to allocate for this purpose, that item is not on your agenda. That's a multi-step process that would involve, as I understand it, require the town to interact with the Cape Cod Commission to solicit the funds, to secure the funds, to place them in that Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund and then make them available on a reimbursement basis. So it is, just want to caution, it's not an item on your agenda. This is, what's on your agenda is strictly the allocating funds from the existing Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, which certainly was well within the board's purview.
Okay, that's a good point. And is there any opportunity for you to investigate the possibility of using those funds at a later time and reimbursing it? Is that something we would have to come back to revisit?
It can be investigated. I, I don't, I don't know the details of this. And is it, all I can note is it's not on the agenda, so you might want to be cautious about. You know, you have another option available to you if you choose to vote that way.
I think that the, it's still the same option to use the Affordable Housing Fund to, to fund this either way. I think Mr. Galasso was just trying to point out that it's not always CPC funds that is used to create that fund. So I think he was just pointing out that maybe it's not coming out of CPC, but I guess that's details to be worked out.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if just might, the funds from the Cape Club Redevelopment Project were included in their permit from the Cape Cod Commission. And that condition in their permit stated that those funds, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars are to be collected from the developer and then sent to the town of Falmouth. That's the wording in that permit, and I'd be more than willing to share that with Julian.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. Thank you.
I think Mr. Suso's caution on the language is appropriate. And Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I just want to say that we've just authorized the, the allocation of two point three million to subsidize the development of those forty eight units. It only leaves a little over four hundred thousand left for other projects that are coming forward. And I serve on that working group. And that's what Carla Ferroni is reflecting here is that we don't feel that that money should be authorized for the purposes of affordable energy when they could be used for other units, given the housing crisis that we're in. We think that you can find other sources of money to pay for those of renewable energy. Certainly, I agree with it a hundred percent. It would be great to provide that. But, you know, we're dealing with a limited amount of, of money available, and that's where we stand at this point. So that was the basis for the recommendation from the working group.
Oh, Miss Scott Price?
I'm looking at the looking at the numbers of how much per unit we're authorizing. If the solar panel amount had been added into that, we would still be below our threshold of the, of a hundred thousand. Am I doing that math correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I understand what, what Sam is saying, but I'm also thinking about if it had been bundled all together in the beginning, it's, it would have been under the hundred thousand. We probably would have approved it. If we're going to, we probably would have approved it altogether. So is it a question of because the solar panels are coming in as a separate item, that that is why it's in question of probably not being a good idea?
Well, it's a change order and there's only so much money left in the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, and you have to decide what we should be using it for. And the working group feels like we should hang on to that in case we have a project where somebody can build new, you know, two more units, excuse me, four more units of affordable housing. Now hopefully we'll get some, some more recharge of the fund. But I think at this point, our recommendation is hold it and maybe later on if other funds can't be found from other sources for renewable energy, then you can reconsider it.
Okay, well, as far as the, the limit of the amount of funds in the actual budget on hand, I know that we have approved projects previously that were going to be contingent on future funding in the fund, like for instance, the Brick Hill Road Place. I believe it's called Brick Hill Place. We promised them almost a million dollars and at the time we only had maybe half of that. And then it was contingent on future funding. So I don't think the limit of the money that's in there really affects our decisions to support the project. I think it's just your, your, your point is well taken about whether or not it's appropriate to fund another unit or fund the solar panels. Yes, miss?
Well, hang on, before you leave, the purpose of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund is to subsidize the development additional units of affordable house, not solar as an auxiliary accessories feature. So we stuck to the purpose of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. It's not to deny the importance of renewable energy. I'm a hundred percent behind that. It's just the question of, aren't we mixing in now somebody else's wishes that was never intended in terms of the use of the, the funds from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund?
Okay, Megan?
So I guess I would just go back to what Andrew was saying, which is if they had originally made this their package, you know, I think it would have been, this is what the development looks like, and these are affordable units, and this is how we're developing these affordable units and proposing to have them be energy efficient. I guess, you know, my feeling is this is, this project is sort of a deliverable that's ready to go after many hurdles. Versus, I, I hear what you're saying, Sam. You know, you could save the money for, you know, projected future project. And it is a little bit of a drop in the bucket, although every dollar obviously counts as we see here. But, you know, this is an additional two hundred thousand plus for a project that's well on its way, and we know is, is, you know, knock on wood, something that's, that's really likely to be happening versus, you know, something that's a little bit more illusory. So I hear Sam's concern, and I wouldn't want this board to kind of become, for us to set up a situation where it's like coming back to the piggy bank to kind of, you know, make a project, do some really wonderful and admirable things to a project. But I guess I see this as a little bit different. This is a really well thought out project. And the goal here, there have been a lot of iterations. They could, they would have loved to make more units. I think, you know, they asked for it to be more units to begin with and, and, and that was scaled back. So I think what's being proposed are some, some really great benefits to the tenants. So that's my two cents.
Let's just mention one other thing that this past Thursday, the Community Preservation Committee acted, and they did not recommend funding the two hundred and five thousand, and that is a requirement of the special legislation for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
And I think that's why Mr. Galasso pointed out that sometimes the fund is funded by other sources rather than just CPC, so that's why he mentioned that. And I take Mr. Suso's advice on the wording, so we're not going to add that wording. But it is part of the explanation of the, the thinking.
Yeah, yes, but, but right now that is not the, there's no mention of any kind of exception like that in the special legislation. So there may be a legal restriction. The way it's set up right now, it is pretty general. Peter, what's your take?
Yeah, so Sam is obviously familiar with the statute and correct that the board cannot approve a, an application to the fund until it receives a recommendation from CPC first.
The board cannot approve a, an application to the fund until it receives a recommendation from CPC first. However, it does, the board does not, is not bound by the CPC's recommendation.
That's true.
The statute is just, it sets a process that says before you act, you need to hear from the CPC. So you've, you've heard from the CPC. It wasn't mentioned tonight, but I know that Mr. Suso sent to you a memo. That confirmed that the Community Preservation Committee did vote to recommend the extension. Of the, of the timeline, but did not recommend approval of the additional 205,000. And just for consistency while we're on it. They did, the CPC did recommend the 2.3 million. For your previous application, the Scranton Maine Found With Housing Corp proposal. So just to get that on the record, that those were the two votes of the CPC.
Interesting. I guess we're going to have to philosophical discussion about whether or not we want to include energy efficiency. Additions to these affordable housing projects. I thought it was a great idea when I heard it and suggested that. I mean, ultimately that does make it more affordable for the tenants. And for the housing authority, if they should choose to prove, you know, to move forward with it. That's a, that's a tricky one. I guess the key to success would be to incorporate the solar panels in the initial. Design, so it's not thought of as an add-on. It's almost like, you know, adding granite counters in your kitchen at the last minute changes the budget. So what's, what's your advice, Mr. Suso? Should we take this under advisement and?
Well, I would first vote to extend. I think there's.
Certainly.
That's, that's, that's the key one that I think there's unanimous agreement on.
I'd so move.
Addison, second.
Okay, all those in favor? Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Addison, aye.
And Brown, aye. And then on the second one, do we need to reconsider and think about whether or not the? The separate funds that are not on the agenda, the discussion about using the funds from the mitigation? And whether or not that's a separate matter that the board could take up at maybe our next meeting or?
Well, I think, I think you certainly can. It's within the purview of the board. It's what you prefer to do. I just want to make sure that we're. If you're choosing to use those funds, we're securing them appropriately and you have the full information on. How they can be used and what the rules and regulations are. I, it's. I think there's some limitations on it that are not existent for the Found With Affordable Housing Fund as well.
Okay. And Megan?
That's what I was, I don't feel like I have enough information tonight about that particular piece. So, you know, I could. I could also see maybe there's a cobbling together. Maybe if we find out there's a limitation. But we can get some certain amount in that way. Maybe this, maybe we come back and look at that in a, in short order. Look at that issue when we have the information in front of us.
Okay, Mr. Stubb?
Yeah, I can just shed just a little bit of light on that. We, 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 Carla Ferroni did. Consult with Patty Daly at the Cape Cod Commission to find out what the process would be to access those funds. This is actually back a couple of years ago that she inquired. But the answer was that it, you know, it's essentially a written letter of request. It's not a formal program that has. Procedures and specific requirements laid out. There's a very general statement. In the decision that Mr. Glasso references that says it's for the creation of affordable housing in Falmouth. The process would be, we would send a letter describing the, the proposed project and presumably have a dialogue perhaps. And then they would write back saying that it's approved or not approved and we were told it would be on a reimbursement basis. So I don't, so it's to. In, in terms of how quickly can we turn this around? I mean, we can. We can submit a formal request to the Cape Cod Commission. But whether we're going to hear back from them in a week or three months, you know, hopefully it wouldn't take three months and we can certainly. You know, follow up with them. I just, I don't want to set an expectation that we're going to get a definitive answer in a week or two because that's not under our control necessarily.
I'd like to ask that I would move that we authorize a town manager to engage in that process.
Okay.
To write the letter. I mean, I'd like to know. I think it would be helpful for us to understand.
Addison, second.
All those in favor? Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Ms. English Briar?
English Braga, aye.
Mr. Patterson?
Addison, aye.
And Brown, aye. I'd be interested to know that as well. So thank you.
And then if it's just to, you know, I'll just say from my point of view, if we find out that those funds are not available or it's too. Burdensen or the timeline is too long, then we have, I think, the information in front of us to maybe review this. And make a decision about those funds and we can, and we know we've sort of gone down that road and tried to. Explore that avenue, which is I think what CPC's vote was directed at.
Maybe we can invite the CPC chair to come to the meeting and explain better the sense of the committee that was voting that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Glasso.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight, everyone. Thank you.
And next we have a report from the Council on Aging. Welcome, Mr. Vera. How are you?
Good evening, everybody. I think Jill is joining us also.
Okay.
But I have a few comments to make before I turn it over to Jill. During this past fiscal year, the council primarily was meeting via Zoom. But once the new building was open, we began our in-person meetings again and it's been a real delight to have our meetings in our, our new facility. We welcomed two new members on the board this year, David Hearn and Betsy Heike as new members. Brenda Swain stepped down after three full terms and a huge thank you to Brenda. She has, she has stayed though as part of our senior community as a, as a volunteer and joined our volunteer team. So it's, it's great to still see Brenda. At the, at the center. Brenda and I came on board at the same time. She. Was filling a. A new term. I was filling an unexpired term. And so this is my final year as I fill out my third term and. We came on board shortly after Jill became the new director. And with the sole intention of working towards a new facility. And I think it's safe to say. The outcome has surpassed our expectations. You know, it has been extremely gratifying to see how vibrant. The new center is and how popular it is. If, if you happen to go by the parking lot, you see how full it is. And, you know, the, the building is getting just as much use as we had hoped and more. So. I see Jill is not with us, so I'm going to turn it over to her and she'll update you on our programs and the progress we're making down there. Jill?
Hi, good evening, everybody. I do have a slide presentation if they'd like to bring up the first slide. Thank you. Yep, you can stay right there on that slide. So thanks for having us tonight and I know through some of the quarterly reports, some of this might be redundant, but. I'd just like to do a quick recap of our fiscal year 21 and. Each quarterly report and annual report, you'll see this type of outline with these categories and how we track our service units. So this is all comes from how we do our state reporting, which is why you will continue to see this in all the quarterly and annual reports. And just to note that a service unit is every interaction a participant has utilizing the Senior Center Program of Services. The center was closed all during FY21 and just to note that all of the staff did continue working and providing. Critical resources and available services throughout COVID. So some of our, I always like pictures. I'm not a photographer, but I do like to have pictures in my programs here. Transportation is a big service that we do provide. We did it all during COVID. We would bring one person on the van at a time. Right now we do have several people we can put on the van and we keep it with a mask mandate. Bringing people to the grocery stores, pharmacies, and of course now we get to bring them to the senior center. We also have maintained our outreach services, our information referrals, our counseling, our support groups, you know, that was all done. Over the telephone or through Zoom. And one of the big programs that we maintained, of course, was the food distribution to homebound seniors. Who live at home, but also live in housing apartments. So if you see the two pictures in the middle, you see one of the deliveries to one of the housing locations. And then to one of our happy seniors who would get our weekly outreach call to check in on them and deliver food. And we did that from March of 2020 to March of 2021 and we delivered 6,400 bags of groceries. And kudos to our van driver and our outreach coordinator who did that on a day, on a weekly basis. We also provided through outreach was the vaccination rollout, working closely with the town manager, the health agent, assistant town manager and public safety. And that was to help seniors worth getting their first vaccine appointment, second vaccine appointment and homebound seniors. And what we were able to do at the senior center, we have a very large database and it's called my senior center database. So we were able to put out regular robo calls about updates on vaccination appointments. We can send out mass emails and also a lot of outreach phone calls. That was a big undertaking and I think we had a really big impact on making sure that the percentage of seniors vaccinated was quite high for the town of Falmouth. In just the time period when the governor put out the announcement on the vaccines, which was at the end of January. Until just March, we had done over 5,245 incoming phone calls. And then the next couple of months, we did another 4,000. So that was a pretty big undertaking. We also maintained our professional services. The picture at the upper right shows you that we had done a Dropbox for people to put in any secured files that we needed to. Get to help them with fuel assistance, any shine insurance, open enrollment information and all of that. Fuel assistance, legal advisory, shine insurance was all done over the telephone. And then our tax advisory service, we did. All through a, a drive-through pickup with our volunteer tax associates. We also, the lower two pictures, some of our programming, we did a couple grabbing, grab and go lunches. Over the holidays, which was actually a huge hit with people. And also. Another big thing we had done was with Zoom programming, all of the directors on the Cape collaborated. And any programs that we all developed over Zoom, we all shared so that any senior across the Cape could participate in any program offering. From any center. From foreign down to provincetown. So that was, that was awesome. Next slide please. So leading up to our official ribbon cutting ceremony. What we did was we did a phased opening which occurred from June 7th to June 30th. And this allowed for Falmouth resident taxpayers aged 60 plus to come in and enroll with the center and take a small group tour. Then on June 30th is when the town officials held the ribbon cutting ceremony to officially open the center to the Falmouth community. Next slide please. So Falmouth Senior Center is open. I have to say, this is definitely the place to go to. This place is popping. All the time and the comments people are making are just absolutely amazing. Again, I love taking pictures here. What I wanted to show you was that participants, whether they're re-enrolling. If they were already enrolled in the old center or enrolling for the first time, you'll notice. Some of the pictures of people, whether they're standing in line, signing up for program signups or enrolling with the center. And then we also have our senior center chappy cafe. You'll notice some pictures down the bottom to the right. People are absolutely loving the cafe. When I say this is a place to go to, this is now the hangout. We have regulars. We have people. That are coming, meeting up with friends, meeting new friends and actually a lot of people are running into old friends they hadn't seen for a long time. Anytime you see lunch at the cafe, work stop and buy for breakfast or coffee. You'll definitely notice people are utilizing the patio area, the entire lounge area outside the cafe. You're enjoying the give and take book section. And because our cafe has been so successful, the room closest to the cafe, we set up every day with extra tables for lunch. You'll also see the picture of the game room upstairs with the pool table. This is used every single day. You'll see people in their playing pool and ping pong will be next, but. They're absolutely loving these social spaces. In addition to all the services that we offer and we're going to continue to build up our services, we're just basically scratching the surface right now. But just want to share a couple of things with you. We are currently offering about 15 exercise programs. Just of wish to give you a gist, about 10 of them for October already have wait lists. We have nine social game type programs. We have weekly wellness clinics. We have gadget tech support. We have support groups and conversation groups and the cafe. So what we try and do is when we start to see wait lists, we look at how do we offer more of these classes or, you know. Whether it's a different room or actually more days of the classes. But I have to say the rooms pretty much are, are getting pretty filled up. Next slide please. One more slide, thanks. So I always love to look at numbers. So what I did was because COVID was in 2020, I went back to 2019. And I wanted to take a look at the exact timeframe we started to enroll people. So from June 7th. 2019 to September 24th, our enrollment at the old center was 167. At the new center, we're already sitting on new enrollment of 1,252. This does not take into account the people that we are also re-enrolling. And when I talk about enrolling is people come in, they fill out the new form. They get a code of conduct, they get assigned a card, they get to like a scan card. That they'll check in when they come in because that's how we do our statistical reporting. We take a picture. Don't worry, nobody sees the picture. It stays in the database. That's a pretty significant number, just of new enrollments. I also took a look at the events, again, the service units of the events. Now at the old center, you'll see that were 5,878. It was a small building, but we made sure that old building that we actually programmed each room. As often as we can to make sure that that building was being utilized. And you can see right now, we're already sitting on 8,742 units of service. So I have to say it is a happening place. It's very exciting and. I think people in the Falmouth community are pretty happy about what we're offering. Have any questions? We're here for you.
Looks like it's rolling out just as you envision.
It absolutely is. You know, the vision of changing a perception of senior centers and creating a space that. That brings people to engage with each other and socialize and connect. You know, we see people. You know, they're getting up, they're getting dressed, they have some place to go and that's what's important. I had one woman praising, she's like, I can finally get up and get dressed up and afford to go out and eat. And we have a lot of regulars, not just for the programs, but for the socialization in the cafe area and the game room and the patio. So I have to say. It's pretty amazing.
Yes, Megan?
I just wanted to say a huge shout out for that location because that was really hard fought and I know Jim and Joe. You know, that, that was that stumbling block that we really had to get over as to where to put this place. But I think now that we see it and how it entered, it's integrated into that campus and how that location. You know, being so central and being accessible. it just, you know, I can't, I almost can't imagine it unfolding the way it has in some of the other locations. Not that we didn't have some other good options, but it just, it was just done so well there. And I, you know, I, I love that when we drive down Main Street, people who are coming to this community for the first time can't help but, you know, pass by it. And it's really just, it's just, you know, exceeded expectations, I think.
I saw some buzz, I saw some buzz in social media, and I cracked up people in the younger 60s. They were coming in and they took some pictures and they posted on Facebook. And they were commenting like, you know, you gotta go, you gotta check it out. And then there were some 40 and 50 year olds chiming in going, do you think they'll do some intergenerational with us? Do you think we can go? And it was fun to see that.
I've always liked that site.
That's great.
Glad it's working out the way we hoped. I mean, eventually we maybe have a little bit of, you know, parking concerns. But I, I think we're going to be right in the balance and it's going to work out. I'm 62, I can go there now, huh?
Yes, you can.
You'd have to come check it out. I mean, I've checked it out, but I haven't hung out. Any other comments from the board?
No, just thanks for everything that you guys keep doing.
Here, here.
Thanks for those photos. That really is, brings it home how people are enjoying and using the space.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I look forward to seeing you down there. Okay, well, thank you. And so next is petition article presentations for a November 2021 town meeting. We've allowed and indicated to the folks that we want to try to keep five minutes each to the presentation. And then I don't know if we'll have many questions, but we won't be commenting, I don't think. Typically, our practice is just to listen and ask any questions that we may have.
Mr. Chair, do you want me, I know Doug Jones used to be the timekeeper. Do you want me to try and do that, or will you do that?
If you'd like. Yeah, sure. Welcome, Mr. Bird.
Yes, could you promote Art Gaylord as in the attendees to up to whatever it is, a participant?
Yes, sir.
While that's going on, I'll just thank you very much for your attention. I know it's a late night. This is a long journey for us. This is one step in getting this article before town meeting and approved. And what I want to do is have Art, who's a resident expert, to give you an outline of it. Is he, has he been elevated yet?
Yes, sir, he's here.
Okay, so I'll let Art do the talking. Thank you for making this possible.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I actually, well, it's been almost a month since we've been in front of you after several weekly appearances. But in terms of the article, I think you all have it in, in front of you.
We do.
The actual wording of the Warren article is essentially that which has been used by many other, other towns. And it's asking to establish a municipal light plant under Article, Chapter 164 of the Massachusetts General Law. That this law has been around for almost 150 years now. It was originally used for municipal lighting plants, which is why the name comes from electricity was new. It was then extended to allow for gas services in a town. In the 50s, it was expanded to enable cable services. And then in the 90s, it was again expanded to a lot of telecommunications services. And so basically, it's become an all-purpose mechanism for a town to offer subscriber-based services to, to its community. The, we see this is based, this vote is being the first step in a multi-step process. The, the law basically says that the town shall have two votes on this at least two months apart and not more than 13 months apart. And it takes a two-thirds majority or majority vote at each meeting to establish this municipal light plant. So what we're looking for now is at this town meeting to take that first step. It, it really, it doesn't commit the town or town government to specifically doing anything other than beginning the process of enabling this light plant. Should it pass the two votes, then the next step would be for the town to decide how they wanted to administer this. It potentially could be the role of a select board, or it could be a municipal light plant board, which would be elected by, by town members. Once that's done, the following step would be to hire a manager. The law does require that there be a municipal light plant manager who does the, you know, budgeting overseas data day operations, et cetera. So that's basically the process. And, you know, we're, we're hoping that you will endorse this first step on this path.
Very well. And any questions from the board on the process? Yes, Mr. Price?
Just a question about if there's any other MLPs on the Cape, because there is a part in here. Oh no, I can't find it. Maybe it was on the back in, somewhere in here, it says that there's an opportunity to collaborate with other MLPs. And I think that's on the back somewhere. So are there other ones on the Cape?
At, at this point, there are no, no, no other ones on the Cape, although other towns are looking to see what we're doing. There are a couple that are just off Cape. Fairhaven is doing one. Milton, a little closer to, is, is doing one. And overall, in, in Massachusetts, there are about 50 MLPs. A dozen or so are devoted solely to doing broadband.
Out of interest, sorry, go ahead.
I assume that at town meeting, you're going to have a presentation about this.
Yes, that's our intention.
Can I just make a suggestion that I don't know if, if people know your background and the expertise and skills that you and other members bring to this? And I think that information, you, I don't know if you've thought about it, you might be kind of humble about it and maybe not have thought to include that, but I would encourage you when you put your presentation together to really talk about your experience and expertise and why you are fit and the group is fit to lead this charge.
Thank you, yes. We'll certainly do that. And we're actually proud of the fact that we have, and not, not me specifically, but there's, we have a good group of people and we have really a national class advisory board that's helping us.
The amount of research that's been undertaken by this group is pretty impressive. I was pretty impressed also to find out that Town of Falmouth actually already approved and adopted municipal light plant back in, was it 1934 or 37?
That's correct.
They went through the whole process, but then never actually acted on it.
Yeah, just as a historical point, the problem was, so they wanted to buy the power from, or buy, create their own electrical generating plant. And they had discussed it with, I believe it was Cape and Vineyard Electric at the time. And they gave a price. The town voted twice by overwhelming margins to establish an MLP. And they even, I believe, budgeted money for it based on the estimate they were getting from Cape and Vineyard Electric. Once that got through, Cape and Vineyard Electric raised the price. And just the town didn't have the funding and it dissipated. But, so, it's, it's a historical footprint, actually. But it's interesting that the town went through this process before.
Yeah. So it's not new. All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for bringing that in. And if there's no further questions, we're going to move to the next subject, unless there's anything else you want to share.
No, thank you very much for considering us.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming in. Okay, next, we're going to hear from Nat Trumbull about his petition article number 23. Welcome, Nat.
Citizens' Petition Article 23 for the November 2021 Town Meeting proposes a townwide bylaw establishing quiet hours for trucks on Town of Falmouth roads within residential neighborhoods and on town roads bordering residential neighborhoods. Numerous studies have shown that serious health impacts of sleep deprivation, those impacts can be cumulative and have long-term consequences. A widely publicized study this past year linked transportation noise in residential neighborhoods to dementia. A report by the Pew Charitable Trust calls noise the new secondhand smoke issue. This proposed bylaw protects Falmouth residents, including children and the elderly, from nighttime sleep disruption. The proposed quiet street hours are designed to be fair, not to interfere improperly with commercial interests. The proposed hours are 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. I would like to add that this is also an equity issue. More affordable properties in town are more likely to be in close proximity to more serious transportation impacts. Those impacts include diesel soot, nitric oxides, and noise pollution. This bylaw would apply to residential neighborhoods townwide. This proposed bylaw aims to protect all residential neighborhoods from the harmful consequences of noise from nighttime truck traffic. We're confident that the Falmouth Select Board, under the guidance of Town Council, can craft a bylaw that balances commercial and residential interests. Exemptions to the restrictions imposed by this noise bylaw, for example, for trash collection under Chapter 191.11, in town commercial areas may be necessary. A noise study related to truck noise impacts on Falmouth neighborhoods may be needed. The subtleties and nuances such a bylaw can be worked out by town experts. It is true that the Steamship Authority's scheduling of trucks with a 5:30 AM departure from Woods Hole has served as the catalyst for this bylaw. We do not believe this bylaw targets only the Steamship Authority, nor do we believe this bylaw jeopardizes the Steamship Authority's ability to provide, quote, adequate transportation as defined by the Enabling Act to Martha's Vineyard. For comparison purposes, shaws and stop and shop have truck arrival and departure curfews that are already more stringent than the proposed 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM quiet hours proposed by this bylaw. I checked on that this morning. The experiences of communities across the country demonstrate quiet streets bylaws can be enacted and will work. A townwide bylaw will undoubtedly be an overall positive for town residents. We believe this bylaw will be enthusiastically supported by voters. Again, the proposed quiet hours, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, do not overreach. In conclusion, this proposed bylaw is a reasonable and necessary first step toward protecting the health and quality of hundreds and likely thousands of Falmouth residents. Smart Citizens Task Force looks forward to the adoption of Article Number 23 at this fall's town meeting.
If that's it, Mr. Trumbull, then we'll entertain questions from the board. Any questions for Mr. Trumbull?
Questions that I had listed, he actually answered in this presentation. So, thank you.
Okay. And I think my questions were answered as well, it's relating to the townwide nature of the proposal. So I think I'm all set. Anybody else?
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trumbull, for coming in. I appreciate it. And next, we're going to hear from Christopher McGuire regarding petition article number 24. And that is regarding $150,000 of free cash for designing complete streets project. Welcome, Mr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board, Mr. Suso. I'm Chris McGuire, and I'm here tonight to encourage you to support petition number 24, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $150,000 to be used for the design of complete streets projects, designed to create a backlog of shovel-ready projects that would be eligible for state or federal construction grants. I'm a longtime member of the Falmouth Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and I'm the BikePeds representative to the Transportation Committee. Both of these committees sent memos to the Select Board in early August specifically recommending the budgeting of these funds for complete streets designs. As you know, the Select Board approved Falmouth's Complete Streets Policy in 2019, where it describes a complete street as one that is intended to accommodate all users by creating a roadway network that fulfills the needs of persons utilizing of ride of transportation modes while preserving the aesthetic character of the roadway. And example projects include expanding sidewalks, creating bike lanes, expanding public transportation, and improving crosswalks. The Department of Public Works has been a really great partner to the town and the committees. And there's some language about complete streets in the current budget, but these funds are different. These funds are specifically for design work to create this backlog of shovel-ready projects to help the town apply for and receive construction funds. Shovel-ready projects are almost always more competitive for state and federal grant opportunities, even for grants that don't require shovel-ready projects. Having a project already in design demonstrates a municipal commitment to the project. Typical project design represents 10% to 15% of the total construction costs. So the town could leverage their funding up to 10 to 1 by acquiring these construction grants. These funds, based on information from the Department of Public Works, should allow the town to design two to three projects in a year. As you're well aware, Falmouth is close to finishing a complete streets prioritization process with the Cape Cod Commission, which then makes the town a tier-three town eligible for state complete streets funding, which averages about $10 million a year. In addition, there are other state grants like Safe Routes to School, Mass Trails, and the newer Department of Transportation Shared Streets Program, which has awarded $33 million to 183 towns in Massachusetts since June of 2020, including $872,000 awarded to six towns on the Cape. None of those were Falmouth. Even beyond the significant state funding, there's the potential in the news for once-in-a-generation funding of federal infrastructure projects, if allocated by Congress. The time to invest in design is now. In, in summary, the Select Board discussed complete streets earlier this year, recognized that the town needs to provide more funding to support the complete streets town policy. This funding shows the commitment of the town to, to complete streets, would enable two to three projects to be shovel-ready and ready for potential federal or state's infrastructure funding. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Any other additional questions from the board? Yes, Mr. Patterson?
Chris, do you have specific projects already that you think would deserve a high priority?
Well, my understanding is that when the complete streets prioritization process is completed, which I believe will happen pretty soon, that is the town's prioritization list of complete streets projects. So I think that we're already paying the Cape Cod Commission to help us with that exact prioritization. In the absence of that, their bicycle and pedestrian committee made a plan, a bike plan in 2015, which includes a lot of recommendations. The Transportation Committee has included a number of recommendations. I think there's a backlog of millions of dollars of projects. So it's just a question of deciding which ones are most important.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McGuire? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. McGuire. I think that was pretty, pretty well explained, and hence no more questions.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a petition article presentation by Nathaniel Trumbull and Becky Connors. And actually, Becky Connors, I guess you'll do the presenting for this one. And this is a vote to transfer from the Ferry Embarkation Fund, amount of $30,000 for the purchase and installation of up to six permanent LED signs, the cost estimate provided by the DPW Director. Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Connors.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking tonight as an innkeeper of a seasonal motel in Woods Hole called The Sands of Time, and also as a resident living on Woods Hole Road, and a person who crosses that street six to 10 times a day on foot. that street six to ten times a day on foot. And I wanted to give a firsthand opinion about why these speed signs would benefit the community. Last Thursday, I was walking across the street. I looked to the left, I looked to the right, and looked to the left, stepped out, and I came within an inch of getting creamed by somebody going about sixty to eighty miles an hour down that road. I had just looked. There was nobody there. I went to step out, and if I hadn't jumped back, I would have been killed. It was an experience that was terrifying and is going to be repeated. The people that are driving down to make those ferries do not realize how fast they're going. They frequently speed, and because of the narrow roads and twisty streets, speed enforcement is very difficult on those roads. There's no place for a policeman to pull over somebody safely if they are speeding, and these signs would greatly impact people's knowledge of how fast they're going. So we are asking, not only myself as a business owner whose guests pull out and take a left at huge peril every time they drive, to a citizen who has family living on Harbor Hill Road who are afraid to drive down the street and take a left because of the speed of the trucks coming out of those ferries. They come out like caged animals driving up that road, and if people could see how fast they were going, I believe it would help some of the impact of the these signs would help their speed by understanding how exactly how fast they're going. The town has recently just installed three of these L E D speed signs on Route one fifty-one, as you probably are aware, and we're asking, the Smart Citizens Group is asking for your support at town meeting to vote for that money coming from the town ferry embarkation fee. That the funds are earmarked, not limited to providing harbor services, public safety protection, and emergency services and infrastructure. So we're asking you to please support our request to put anywhere from four to six signs somewhere between Palmer Ave. and Woods Hole Road on both sides.
Okay. Questions from the board, please? Miss Scott Price?
Where it says the Ferry Embarkation Fee Fund, there's an asterisk, but then there's no indication of what the asterisk goes to.
The funds in the Town Ferry Embarkation Fee may be appropriated for services, including, but not limited to, providing harbor services, public safety protection, emergency services, or infrastructure improvements within or around the harbor or any city or town which receives money from this section. And there's, I have the U R. L. if you'd like me to give it to you. I can email it or put it in the, I can actually take it and put it in the chat if that would be helpful.
Well, my suggestion would be to actually put it in the explanation, because this is the second time I've looked at it and wondered what the asterisk meant and thought that there was something missing that should have been at the bottom of it. And so I think what you just described is really important and good information to know that should be with, I think should be with that asterisk.
Okay. And I can add that into the chat, and how is the easiest way to get that out to people?
Sorry, I think your transmission was broken up. I couldn't hear what you said at the left.
Sorry about that. I was just looking to see how the easiest way to get that U R. L. with that.
I would say by email to the Select Board at Falmouth M A. gov.
Okay, we will do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And any other questions for the presenter? Just informationally, I will share that Mr. Suso has been working with Police Chief Ed Dunn to identify some locations preliminarily already, so there is an initiative, but we welcome this petition article as well to heighten the discussion.
Thank you very much.
And so that's it for petition articles. Next item is initial discussion of right of first refusal on a thirty-one-point-seven acre property on Route one fifty-one. This is adjacent to the Valley Mead or Cape Club or C L S V. Associates, and the reason I brought this on is it's early, and we don't have full vetting of the opportunity to buy this. We, I just want the board to be aware of the fact that it is something that we have the right of first refusal. There's a hundred and twenty days from, I think, September thirteenth, I think, was the initial contact date, and so we're not really under a hurry to think about this. But when I first saw this, the first thing that came to mind was that the train track runs along this property, and I've long been thinking about, I wish we could have rail service in Falmouth, and potentially this site could be a place where the passengers could embark and disembark for potential rail service to, you know, Boston or wherever. So I would love to see that be a possibility. I don't know if that's even realistic. I talked to Tom Caher about it because he's my local transportation expert, and he said that he doesn't really think that my idea of a train station in North Falmouth is a practical one, because he is under the impression that the bike path from Bourne to Falmouth, the proposal to do rail with trail has proven to make that bike path extension extremely expensive for Bourne, and they've been advocating for elimination of the rail, and they may be getting some traction with legislators who, I guess, I don't know that this is a hundred percent accurate. Mr. Caher cautioned me that it may not happen, but it's something that is being considered is to eliminate the rail spur in Falmouth, eliminate the trash train, and any rail that was needed could be accessed off of the existing rail system near, closer to the sandwich gate. So that's not a done deal, but that was Mr. Caher's take on the matter that it may be an uphill battle to try to bring rail service back to Falmouth, so my little pipe dream might not work out, but he just, you know, that was all the information I've gathered on it. If we think that that's something that we're interested in pursuing, then we might ask Mr. Suso to investigate whether or not it's actually correct that the rail trail, that the bike path is going to take over the bridges and eliminate the rail service. And just looking for initial feedback from the board on if we want to explore that, or should we just consider this property for affordable housing or other purposes? And just looking for initial thoughts on it, so we know which way to go. Megan?
Well, I would say that I think there are so many things out of our control when it comes to any kind of rail, you know, travel. I'd like to know about it for other purposes. I mean, I'd like to know, you know, just some information about, you know, the price point, what the land kind of looks like, how, you know, what's the developable, you know, the potential for development. I mean, I know where it is. I live really close to here, but, you know, just in terms of, you know, of that thirty-one plus acres, you know, what are we, what are we looking at in terms of what might be developed? There's some power lines that are around that area that might impact that. So I'd like to just know about it for the potential for housing or, you know, for some other needs that we might have. As far as the issue with the bike trail piece, that was what I was actually, had been reaching out to you and Julian about setting up a meeting, was about this idea that there's a new potential proposal for how that bike trail might happen. But I think that that's, it's so far up in the air still, as all those things are, because the idea is it might be tied in somehow to the, to the bridge projects, which obviously are going to have so many steps along the way. So I would still like to find out about, more about this property, just in terms of marketability, et cetera, so I would love to know that.
This is early, and Mr. Suso did point out that, you know, this is very preliminary. We have, staff hasn't had a chance to really pull it all together to give us that breakdown of what could be possible, but I just wanted to put this out there early just to give a heads up that it's something that's coming. Yes, Angelique?
Yeah, same with Megan. I had a lot of questions about the status of the land, if there's any buildings on it, the zoning, you know, could we put commercial and housing, all those things? It sounds like that's still being put together, and I'm glad that we're talking about this early so we're not in a rush, because a hundred and twenty days sounds like a long time, but it's not.
It's not. That's right.
Yeah, so I'm glad we're talking about it now. I would be interested to know, like, if it's in a flood zone, a ten-year, fifty-year flood zone? I mean, I have a list of things that I'm sure that when town staff puts it together, these are things they'll ask about, but I'm wondering if soon-ish, the current owner could give us a tour of the property and perhaps even some interested community members? Because while we may have some general ideas of what could be done there, it'd be helpful and just better to have some community input on that. And then I had a question about if we were interested in purchasing this for any reason, would this need to go into, like, the capital budget, or would it, would we buy it with free cash? What is, what would be the process, or is that still too early?
That's something that Mr. Suso will bring to us of, you know, what the options are. And as I said, this was, just came up, you know, very recently, and staff will do a more in-depth presentation, maybe not our next meeting, but the following meeting. What's your suspected timeline on bringing this back, Mr. Suso?
Well, I don't think we're going to have a whole lot more within a week, so I think it would be more likely the end of October, as you indicate.
Okay.
I think that next meeting is October twenty-fifth.
Yeah. While we're on that subject, I have on my calendar on the eighteenth a joint meeting. Is that, did I make that up?
That was just a placeholder for a potential meeting if one were forthcoming.
Okay, thank you.
You know, there was a concept created for this parcel, whenever it was, ten to fifteen years ago.
Yeah, they wanted to put a supermarket and some housing and mixed-use development. Yeah.
Exactly. So.
And that's defeated a town meeting because I think the planning board gave a negative referral because it kind of created another town center in a place where they didn't think a town center belonged. So we'll certainly look for feedback from the planning board as well on what might be the appropriate use for a property like this.
Right.
Well, I think it's exciting, the potential, just thinking about it is really great, so.
Yeah, I got excited for the train station idea, but we'll see what happens. The bike path's exciting, too, so who knows?
I'm getting you a train set for Christmas. That will have to satisfy you. It'll be a good one, though.
Okay. I should mention, Mr. Chairman, we're working with the Town Council and others in pulling together additional information on this, so we hope to have more, as you've noted, in the not-too-distant future, so can make some informed judgments going forward.
If we could, Mr. Suso, in addition to finding out about the property, if we could maybe reach out to the Bourne Town Administrator, and Mr. Caher said that Bourne may have even gone so far as to have appropriated eight hundred and something thousand dollars for preliminary budgeting for removal of the train tracks and installation of the bike path. So they, I'm certain, would have a lot more information to share with us on the status of the current rail trail idea.
And Doug, I'll circle back and send the email out again, but Scott Lindell and some others from Bike and Pedestrian have been really a big part of the conversation, kind of Cape, you know, townwide between the towns, so maybe we can set that, that meeting up and get some good information on that.
That sounds good.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. And I'm glad to see now that we have a lot of minutes that we're catching up on, and thank you, Mr. Suso, for pushing for that. And I know our lady who does our minutes does a really nice job, but we do have to make sure we get these done timely, setting the tone for the rest of the committees. And we did get an email from Catherine Bumpus reminding us that she went onto the website and did a search for minutes for many committees and boards, and apparently it's a problem that's not just us that's dealing with. So I don't know how we can enforce that with other boards. It's just a friendly reminder, or, I mean, it's best practice to have them done for the, when you have your next meeting, you're supposed to approve the last meeting, and I don't know how, it's hard, though, when you have people doing the minutes and maybe just overwhelmed, and I don't know how we get back on track.
Good question, no easy answers. I think committee members, no different than so many others, have been a little overwhelmed in the last eighteen months, and several are still in a catch-up mode, so I think, I think we're not alone in that regard.
Right.
You know, we're making good strides, I think.
Yeah.
Just, I would just say, while we have Jen, who, you know, does an amazing job taking minutes for hours and hours of meetings, other committees just have their committee members, right, who volunteer? So I would just, you know, and I know Catherine Bumpus obviously knows that, but for the public, just a reminder that, you know, these are volunteer committee members who then on top of it, someone is being the volunteer, volunteer scribe to do the minutes. So, you know, they are trying to fit it in with all the other things, work and family and life, and so, you know, it's never, and, you know, deliberate, you know, trying to avoid it. I think people just get, they do just get caught, you know, in trying to squeeze them in, but you're right, we got to be better about trying to get those out there.
Yes, Mr. Price?
Does the town ever hire interns for various positions for clerical work or anything?
Yes, we do. We depended on the department. We advertise periodically, and sometimes we do well, and sometimes we do not so well.
I notice we have the swearing-in of the AmeriCorps volunteers on Saturday, or no, excuse me, next Wednesday, but they mostly work on outdoor projects, don't they? I don't think AmeriCorps does work like that. Yes?
They're outdoors. Yeah. When I served at AmeriCorps, I did science, engineering, and art projects with kids at the library, so I, I know that they, like, range very greatly in the things that they could do, and I haven't seen any information about them being sworn in. If anybody has that, could they forward that to me? I'd be interested.
I do have the invitation that was sent to the Assembly Delegates Members, so I can forward that to you.
Okay, thank you.
If anybody else is interested, I could forward it as well.
Mr. Chair, I move approval and release for public access the meeting minutes of Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Very well, it's very second. All those in favor? Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
Miss English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And that was just for that first public session?
Yes.
Of July twelfth?
That's correct.
And now, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one? Is there any corrections?
I move approval and release for public access the meeting minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, relative to the Joint Base Cape Cod Proposed Machine Gun Range.
Okay. All those in favor? Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Miss Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. And next, we have August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Are there any corrections or comments?
I didn't get a copy of those.
No, I think they said they were still in draft.
I think they're still coming to us.
Okay, excuse me. Almost had it. All right, individual Select Board members' reports. Anyone have any reports they want to make?
Not tonight.
Well, I just mentioned that the Wampanoag Tribal Community actually had a celebration on Saturdays at Highfield Hall. It was kind of neat, because they had exhibits of various crafts that they do and skills that they, and some of the foods that they consider to be their own, and it was supported by, of course, Highfield Hall, historic Highfield, and also the Rotary Club provided just labor to kind of coordinate things. It was a very nice event, and it's nice to see that kind of thing happening.
Yeah, I saw it on social media, but I didn't intend, and, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there was also Wampanoag Day in Apptuxet a couple of weekends ago, which was basically like a mini powwow, which was pretty awesome.
Oh, cool. And I'll report that I attended the, I don't know if it's considered a grand opening or just a tour of the Rodden Gun Club's renovation. Oh, and Miss Scott Price was there as well, and Peter Johnson Stubb and Mr. Suso, and I got to go out on the tour. We took a bus and went over to the other side of the river, and then we walked up to the old, where the old bog used to be, and, boy, it's really grown in fast. It's only five months since they finished construction, and it's all completely filled in with green. Beautiful, and the commitment to nature and restoring that wetland from the group out there at the Rodden Gun Club was very impressive, really nice.
Yeah, Peter and I got a chance to check out the Yeah, Peter and I got a chance to check out the fish electroshocking, and that was really interesting.
Yeah.
Sadistic.
Okay. Well, I don't have anything specifically other than that to report, so Mr. Suso, did you want to do?
It's a couple items. I was pleased to attend the Finance Committee meeting this past week, the Sandwich Road Fire Station Building Committee meeting, and the, as joined by several members of the Select Board, the Police Department, swearing in a recognition ceremony, and as Mr. Chairman noted, the Child River Gathering as well. And just a reminder, the board's next regular meeting is Monday, October fourth. That concludes my report.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I chose to, to not report on tonight, but reserve the opportunity in the future. But I did attend the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board meeting, and there are some important things that impact Falmouth, and I'll bring them up at a later time.
No, at an earlier time, at a later meeting. People will be able to hear you.
Yeah, I might be coherent, too.
I get it. I let the meeting go too long again.
It happens.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Patterson, second.
Excellent. All in favor, Mr. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Ms. Scott Price?
Scott Price, aye.
That's English Braga?
English Braga, aye.
And Brown, aye. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.